Further or to the council itself to that further, but we don't expect to take any final action. We will start, I guess I want to talk a little bit about how we got to this point. There is, there was two members of the body who provided the city attorney with a agenda for a COW. It was presented to council, it was voted on, and that's what we're bringing forth. And it is their agenda items mostly, except number two and number eight. So I'm going to lean on them quite ferociously on those items that they have agendized. So we're going to start out with number two, discussion, meeting goal setting, what are we trying to accomplish tonight? Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you. So I think that where we need to be, and I think, I sense that the motivation for this meeting in the first place came from the fact that we have varying levels of knowledge as far as what's going on, in terms of what happens on a daily basis from the agencies that actually do the work, from the people we employ that do the work, from those of us that are serving on the task force, and, and the membership at large. And so we have various levels of knowledge as far as where we're at right now with this, and where we're at with the solution. So I would like to see us just come forward with a point in time analysis, like information sharing about where we are right now, what's happening in our communities surrounding homelessness, in terms of what work is happening, what the challenges are, and, you know, with the understanding that this is solving this problem, even in large part, is a collaborative effort from dozens of people, not just local government. Local government cannot and should not ever endeavor to solve this alone, because we will absolutely fail. So, you know, we have a task force, we have community outreach groups, we have nonprofit groups that do this work every day. We employ a full-time employee now that does this work every day. We have three departments that deal with it every day, four departments every day if you count parks. So I would like to see us just analyze where we are now, and, you know, what work is in progress, because I think there's been a lot of commentary about the fact that the city isn't doing enough, or the city isn't doing anything. The city's doing a ton of stuff, and the coalition is doing a ton of stuff, and they've had measurable success doing it. So I'm glad to see that we have those folks to speak to us tonight, but I think we should just walk out with a level base of knowledge amongst all of us as far as what's happening. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you to the public who showed up to be a part of this too. I see some folks who I've talked to before about some exciting ideas, so I'm glad to see them, so that you can all hear about these ideas too, and start thinking about. I realize that we do need to have an educational component, I'm glad that we're talking about this, but I also think there are some people who really want to do good, and be good partners with us, and start getting more people into houses than we could do by ourselves. So, thank you for attending and being a part of this, everyone.
Aldrick Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think, you know, Alder Rasmussen said it quite well on the, the knowledge component. I think tonight is a great opportunity to learn and discuss, and I think that acting on policy matters without knowledge, it's kind of like shooting without aiming, so we need to be, yes, sufficiently aware of what's going on, not just in the governmental realm, but in the private sector as well. But I think it goes beyond that tonight in terms of why this was important and unique. I'm not aware of any time during my tenure, and I'd actually sat in this room at meetings for quite a few years prior to that, here and there. I'm, I'm not aware of any situation on this policy matter where we brought forth this combination of presenters and information, in, in terms of both city government and county government, and the private and non-sector realm. So I think this is very useful and very positive. Thank you.
Any further comments, or shall we? Oh, Aldrick Gisselman, sorry.
Thank you very much. Can you?
Yeah, I think our mics went off when you... Is it not working?
Just ask for a little PowerPoint, Caitlin, please.
Yes.
March 28th. Thank you very much. I was one of the two that requested this meeting this evening, commited the whole, because I feel that the city, as well as the city council, really needs to come to terms with the issue of homelessness, homelessness in our community. And it's, and I've heard public comment, you know, a lot of public comment, a lot of issues with regard to how we're doing with homelessness, but nineteen, since 1990, the city has been dealing with the issue of homelessness. We, we, why is it that this has always been with us? And we continue to, I applaud the agencies that, you know, great deal of agencies within the community, within the county, true, but even the Herald says, "Wassa, we have a serious problem." Most of us don't, well, you can read the article, a person was found in the, in a dumpster on Stewart Avenue. We know he's dead and shouldn't be. That makes him and Wassa people like him are concerned. And that's, that's how I, that's what I'm bringing to this, to this meeting tonight. We have a concern for all the people living in the city of Wassa. And like I said before, a lot of agencies, and they're in front of us this evening, I get that. But, um, excuse me, but I think we have to, I think we have to move on and, and, and listen to the, the commentaries this evening. I specifically want to address the, the issue of number, I'm sorry, with regard to the department. The city of Wassa, at least since 1914, has had a committee of the poor, a department of the poor, a commission on the poor, so we have always felt that we have a concern for the poor people of the city. The Marathon County, of course, had poor farms, a variety of other institutions, but the city of Wassa had a poor department of the city, working with federated charities, that was doing the work of helping the poor. And I, and I, and I'm, where I'm going with this, is that within the city, creating, I guess I pointed Tracy, and what she's doing on the ground in the city of Wassa. I, as, as part of the agenda, some kind of a department of social work, or whatever we want to call it, that is a department of the city of Wassa, more, more Tracy's. We need more Tracy's working in the field, so that they can be dealing with the, with the homeless and the poor people of the city of Wassa. That's, that's why I put this on the agenda. I feel that the city should be looking towards this kind of an agency, this kind of a, an approach to working with the homeless, working with affordable housing, working with a variety of other parts of the city that, that, that needs help, that, the kind of help that Tracy can give it. So the city of Wawatosa has indeed this department of social work. 1922, they hired a full-time social worker to assist Wawatosa residents with community service and resource needs. And I think, and I would like to present this to the city council this evening, as well as to the people of the city of Wassa, as some kind of a, some kind of a goal that we may want to, that we may want to achieve, may not, it may take a while, it may take some study, it may take a lot of thought and, and finances, of course, but at least I think it's someplace that we should be going. They have, they also hired a youth mental health social worker. A lot of, you know, in other areas, I've heard a lot about the need of youth in this community, and I think that the city of Wawatosa is approaching that, and I would like the city of Wassa to be moving towards that, moving towards that kind of a goal, in helping the people of the city of Wassa. We help a lot of people coming into the city with, with a lot of money, but we don't care too much. We don't have, I should rephrase that. We, I think we can approach the lower-income people in the city of Wassa, as well as the, the higher-income people in the city of Wassa, with, with additional staff, so that all the people of the city of Wassa can be treated with dignity, and, and approaching the, and approaching their life in the city with, with welcome, and approaching it as a home. So with that, I thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Oh, sorry. I just wanted to, am I okay to respond to something or not? Okay, just that for the schools, they do have, there are mental health workers, social workers, counselors, and there are, you know, private, there are, there's like a collaborative, so that, there is that, just, I mean, is it ever enough? No, but, but there are those resources. I just wanted to, to offer that. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're going to go to number three, review of the, the city of Wassa responses to the homeless. I guess we're going to start with the, we have certain departments. Do you want to discuss, or call the departments up to discuss? What is your pleasure? Okay, Wassa Police. I see you're number one.
Maybe number two?
Nope.
Hopefully there will be some robust questions that we'll be able to answer, but Chief Bliven and I spent some time talking about things that we think are important for this body to know, and to be able to share with the public. First, we just want to talk about the scope of the issue as it relates to law enforcement response, and what we're seeing and what we hear from community members, who contact us with complaints or issues. So first and foremost, like, we regularly get contacted by businesses that feel like they are suffering a negative daily impact, based on loitering, and bad behavior, and some panhandling, and a significant amount of retail theft that occurs within walking distance of our downtown. Specifically, it's the retail theft of food and alcohol that we get reported on a regular basis. So, so that's one issue. Two, we, we see a great resource in a beautiful library in our downtown, and our library as a policy is very open and welcoming to the unhoused population. But they also had to call us and ask us to provide daily patrols walking inside the library, based on the amount of fights and intoxication. We had an individual overdose in the children's bathroom, with a needle overdose on opioids in the children's bathroom, within the library. And that, that contact with us came through the lens of, people are not, not willing to bring their kids to utilize the library anymore because of some of the behaviors that they're seeing in the library. And we also see that exact same thing occurring with some of our ramps. We have individuals contacting us and saying, and businesses saying, "We're no longer willing to use the ramps because of fear for their safety," or the different types of behaviors that they're seeing. That same thing can be said for the Riverwalk, which is relatively new. Just yesterday, I spoke to an individual whose, whose wife had plans to take a walk with their child on the Riverwalk, and pulled down, and saw homeless encampments, and decided it wasn't safe, or that wasn't something that they wanted to do, so they didn't utilize that resource. And I draw a distinction between whether someone has fear, or whether they, whether it's a good reason to be fearful, like, is there a legitimate concern for their safety? Or is it just that they're not willing to use the services and the resources this city provides because of fear that they have? And one of the challenges for every law enforcement in the country is to reduce fear of the population. We should all be able to exist in an area without fear. We have a significant amount of resources that get spent, specifically in the summer months, with bad behavior that occurs at the gazebo area of the park, and the area we were all at today. So we're seeing people not willing to use our downtown area in the way in which it was built and designed for. We have some safety concerns, which we address tonight, in the COW tour that we occurred, regarding safety issues, at least where some of the encampments are alongside the river. And so this results in our, our staff spending time daily in our parking ramps, daily responding to complaints from citizens about behaviors and thefts. And when I talk about the scope of the issue, it's, it's very difficult to, we have a great staff, who care about every member of our community, but it's getting more and more difficult for them to display the character that we hired them for, being like, it's the same issues with the same people, with the same problems, day after day after day, and nothing seems to change in, in what we're asking them to do. Kicking the same people out of the ramps, trying to get that cleaned up before business starts during the day. You're going to, you, you can see similar issues that DPW is facing. You know, when, when we met with our staff, we asked them, like, "Tell us how you feel about working for the police department." One resounding theme was, "This is getting really old, it's impacting our, our level of enjoyment in our job, dealing with these challenges." So one of the things that's difficult for law enforcement is, like, there's myths, or at least through our lens, I would tell you that these are myths, and that is that people will use the shelters if they're available to them. Some will, some won't. Chief Bliven and I spent time speaking to someone setting a tent up in the middle of the Riverwalk the other day, and we sat there talking to him. He was very pleasant to speak with, and he told us, "Not once have I used a shelter all winter," and gave us his reasons for not doing that. So not everyone is willing to use the Warming Center, or the Salvation Army, or the shelters available. So we look at it through a lens of all the different things that people are asking us to clean up. The decision to use shelters seems to be made easier for individuals when they don't have tents and aren't provided camping gear to be able to camp in areas that then were asked to go clean them out of. Another myth is unhoused individuals will avail themselves of resources if only those resources existed. We have plenty of unhoused individuals that take advantage of wonderful resources available in this community. We don't always agree, but there are lots of individuals that care in this community, who are out doing work on a daily basis, but even they struggle with challenges of people who aren't willing to accept the help that, that they're provided. Another myth is that all of the unhoused don't have money. We, you know, we, we can point to Tracy, and many of the people that she's helped get housed. I would feel comfortable saying, like, that's some low-hanging fruit that she's dealing with, because most of those individuals have a form of income. Some of them have significant income, and it's, the reason for their being unhoused really has to do with issues that aren't financial. So it's not always a money issue, and that's not me telling, standing here telling you that every one of these individuals suffers from the same issues, or has the same financial, every single person has their own unique set of circumstances. So it's very, the myth is, don't paint everyone with a broad brush. Another myth that came up is, you know, we've had two individuals that have died in our community that were unhoused. And the, the myth, because of some of the reporting that occurs, is these individuals died as a result of the elements. Now, no one will argue that if you're living outdoors and unhoused, that that is not a healthy way to live, but both of those deaths are the result of overdosing on illegal drugs. So these individuals had alcohol and drug issues, and the pathologist and the medical examiner has these ruled as overdoses, not exposure situations. But the fact that they were unhoused makes it easy to point to that and be like, "Oh, let's, let's, uh, let's assign it in that situation." And the, the last myth is that all the unhoused are here from Wassa. We, we have plenty of individuals who grew up in Wassa and have lived here, and through a series of circumstances, you just heard about a housing study, we can talk about mental health, we can talk about addiction, we have a whole population of individuals who I call "on the bubble." They're losing their job away from being homeless. So we produce homeless out of our community, but law enforcement is frequently dealing with people who are unhoused, and where they're coming from. When, when we met for in-service with our officers, and we're like, "All right, tell me, tell me what's got you fired up here?" And they're like, "I'm really fired up when I see squads from other communities, well outside of Wassa, showing up at Wassa and dropping people off at 2:00 in the morning, and then heading north, or west, or east, as fast as they can out of here." And one of the ways I look at that is, every police officer gets hired, and you're like, "Why do you want to be a cop?" We all have the same cheesy answer, we say, "But it's true." We're like, "We want to help people." And that, if they didn't, we wouldn't hire them. So if I'm a police officer somewhere else, and I want to help someone that's homeless, where, where am I going to take them? I'm going to take them where resources are, where people care about them, and where there might be shelter. So that's one of the issues that we deal with. We've been, you heard about Mr. Gisselman put up, "We've been dealing with homeless for a long time." I would argue that during the previous mayor's administration, and Mr. Milkie, in his first week, we said, "Bob, we're taking you on a field trip." And we took him underneath the bridges, and we took him on Barker Stuart Island, and had to find the hidden encampments. At first, he said, "There's, there's nothing here, guys," and we're like, "Let's, let's just walk 20 feet into the woods." And, and then his eyes were open. But that's several years ago, and if you look at how homelessness has progressed in our community, and you look at communities, specifically in the Pacific Northwest, that have tents on lining the sidewalks, like, are we, where are we on the path to? We started out with, there's people living under our bridges. Then it went to, they're camping and hiding on Barker Stuart Island. Now we have individuals in open sight on the Riverwalk, behind the library, behind 11 Scott Street. So from a law enforcement perspective, we see this progressing, it's not getting better, and so we want change. Like, we need to do something to positively impact this. We have a tremendous number of contacts with homeless for our law enforcement officers. We know the fire department does, we know our number of complaints from citizens is going up. Parks Department puts in a tremendous amount of time and energy spent cleaning the parks, and, and dealing with that, you heard a little bit about that today. DPW invests time and effort on a daily basis, trying to keep the investment in the parking ramps, so it's even hygienic. We've had the city attorney's office doing work for us to give us legal opinions on how we can go about addressing things, to make sure that, last thing your police department wants to do is violate federal law in how we deal with someone. So the amount of time we're spending at city council meetings doing this, like, this wasn't occurring 10 years ago. This wasn't a topic that we sat and discussed. Ton of resources being forth, to the point that Alder Rasmussen made. And lastly, there's a lot of dollars being invested in this. So, you know, at the end of the day, if, if we don't do something different, we should expect things to continue on the path that they're on. And so the police department by doesn't, by no means has all the answers to all of these problems. And so what would we like to see? I will stand before you right now and tell you, we would like some direction from this body as a whole. If I pick one component of that direction, camping in our parks. So we have some ordinances in place that address camping in the parks. We've had public comment, you just heard, saying, "Hey, we, we support this, we don't support this, what are you going to do?" I, I'll echo those challenges. We stand ready as a police department to carry out your policy. We're policy carrier outers, that's what we'll do. If you don't want camping in the parks, we will ensure that camping doesn't exist in the park, we'll do it legally, per the legal guidance that we've gotten. If you want us to do nothing, please tell us you want us to do nothing. If we don't get some direction, Chief Bliven and I discussed it, and within the next couple weeks, we're going to start carrying out the current city ordinances that exist. So until such a time in which the policy body changes the policy or the ordinance, and suggests that we do something differently, because as we watch that area atrophy, while we have ordinances in place, we feel like that's, that's really our only option at this point. So we also believe we need to address really the underlying causes of homelessness, and we need to make sure that we have case management and the right resources in place. If, if Tracy were standing here, she'd say, "Housing people is the easy part, keeping them housed is the hard part." We need to have an approach to address individuals that make decisions that negatively impact the rest of this community. So as we think about this problem, we are a police department that polices the entire city, not just an unhoused population, not just an upper-income population, for everyone, and we, we always have to keep that in mind. So we'd love to see additional collaboration among nonprofits in the homeless sector. We'd like to see a reduction in the amount of camping equipment being handed out to individuals. We'd like to see enforcement of our current ordinances that prohibit it being in the park after hours, or some direction regarding that. We'd like to see policy ordinances that restrict drinking in the parks, or restricting that drinking to special events when they're approved and moved forward. We've had some conversations about that. And then, you know, lastly, we look at what we're hearing from different larger businesses with properties in the area, and their challenges. Recently, we heard of a business where they're like, "What should we do? Like, we're open to the public," and someone went into the restroom, and here's a naked man standing there, cleaning himself, like, but that's, that's what they walk into, and they're like, "What do we do? How do we keep these things from happening?" We think about all the amount of time and effort that's being invested in our parking ramps. People are going to work, and so they don't have to step over people that are asleep, or human waste, or things like that. Like, should we be providing security? Should private businesses have to hire security, and should the city be providing security in the parking ramps? The way in which we're utilizing law enforcement for some of those things right now is counterproductive. So we're using police officers as security guards. So that's by no means an exhaustive list of what we think could be done, but it's a frustrating time to be a police officer in Wassa right now, in regards to addressing this problem. So I'm available if there's any questions, or I'll let the next speaker out.
Mayor, go ahead. I'm wondering if you'd be willing to share some of the successes. I know that we had Officer Lomarand initially kind of piloting a program, working with North Central Health Care, and obviously that led us to hiring Tracy as our, our outreach specialist, but maybe you could just kind of go over some of the successes you saw, and what happened maybe in that gap time between Officer Lomarand and Tracy?
Sure. Well, I mean, the initial program that involved Officer Lomarand coming off the road as a patrol officer, and being assigned to 40 hours a week or more of, being focused 100% on the unhoused population, that was in partnership with North Central Health Care, that assigned a staff person. So think, immediate community outreach where people are, as well as some case management, and it also include a partnership with the Green Heck Foundation that helped us fund, we rented a house on McCollum Street, I think many people are aware of that, with the idea that if we're dealing with someone who wants to make changes, to be able to take them from their current situation, and be like, at noon, and be like, "By 3:00, you're going to be sleeping in a bed, and here's your bedroom," to be able to do that. We had individuals that made great strides, that took us up on that. Each individual had their own particular circumstances that led they were where they're at, their own traumas, their own issues in life, and their own real formula for how to improve. You know, it, it was also very educational to us to look at, well, what, what are some of the things we need here? We need increased case management, we need daily points of contact with people who are really trying to improve their own situation, we need improved AODA resources to take people to. If you have someone that's a chronic alcoholic, you can't just tell them on Monday, "Hey, you need to quit drinking," and then expect that that's the case. So we need to be understanding that, that that's not how it works, but also have effective resources within our community to be able to address that. So we saw people get housed, and we saw people make positive changes, but we also recognize that taking a trained police officer and having them do something that there, isn't their purpose, that didn't make sense. So that's when we came to the council. We were fortunate and able to get Tracy funded, and get Tracy hired. She comes with a spectacular background, and, I mean, I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, but it's double digits that she's...
Twenty, according to last week.
So, so 20 individuals that have been housed... So, so 20 individuals that have been housed, and again, the, the challenge is that's, that gets them to where there's a roof over their head and there's people moving forward and there's some furniture and there's ability to get food, but that doesn't address the underlying issues which allow them to stay housed. And that's the biggest challenge. I've, I would argue to anyone that asks that Tracy's the busiest bee at the police department. I frequently want to know something and I'm like, where's Tracy? And she's not at the police department because she's out meeting with people and trying to meet their daily needs and have touchpoints with them and get them what's necessary. So, we, we definitely see success, but we also recognize that there's a gap. Tracy can't house a person and then spend two hours a day, every day for the next three months with that individual where they're housed. So, and we also want to see these services provided to individuals where they're at. You don't, you don't necessarily get to schedule an appointment with them for someone two weeks from now on a Thursday. They're concerned about where am I going to be in the next hour, not where am I going to be in the next two weeks. That's a new way of thinking and it, it was hard for us to understand. That's one of the things that we learned. So, we definitely see some things that are able to make progress for some individuals. But what's necessary to like, get rid of homelessness here? It's going to be a different formula for each individual and I think it's doable, but it's, it's going to take a significant investment. It's going to take us holding people accountable. It's going to take people holding themselves accountable and to continue to have a community with a big heart and who's willing to help support those type of initiatives. Okay.
Chad?
So, I sit on the Public Health and Safety Committee every month, so I get to see the reports, Tracy House and Job. I guess my big concern is Tracy's burnout here. I mean, how long can she keep running by herself? How many, how many people would you and the chief feel comfortable having under, in your department? Could you guys support two, three more?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, do we have the capacity to supervise? We're a progressive police department. We encourage our officers from day one. You got some crazy idea that you think might make this a better place to live? Go ahead and we'll, we'll give it a shot if it's doable and experiment with it. So, do I think there's more capability for us? Yes. Do I think that an organized partnership with some of our nonprofit organizations, with North Central Healthcare, to make sure that we have a true understanding of whose job it is to provide what services, try and streamline access to those, to those services? I mean, that's something we're in the process of right now. So, I don't stand here prepared to tell you, if you only fund three or four more positions and stick them at the police department, let me show you what the results would be. If we tripled the Tracy's, we're going to make contact with triple the individuals, like, there would be a positive result. If you gave me three more or six more drug investigators, we're going to arrest more people for drugs, right? So, like, there, there's often that scaled ability to do that, but I'm not convinced that that's necessarily at this moment in time our ask or the most effective thing for us to do. I think there's a lot of work we can do with our partners and getting on the same page with them to find those areas in which we're aligned that we can move forward and give people those resources. North Central seems to be undergoing a bit of an overhaul. We meet with them on a regular basis to talk about case management, what we think our needs are and how to be able to work with them and what that might look like. And I, I think we're probably a couple of months away from figuring out like exactly what that is and if it's something that exists or if it's something that needs to be funding or whether there's a role that the city of Wausau can play in helping provide the resources to keep, keep that momentum moving forward. But I don't, I don't think we're there tonight to be able to do that for you.
Alder Kilian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the information. Deputy Chief, you had mentioned some items regarding, say, substance use and the overdose and so forth. And it seems like there can be a challenging overlap sometimes between homelessness and those types of health and mental health issues. And I guess one question would be, I was rather surprised to learn that during COVID and then during a construction period, if, if I did not misunderstand, that at North Central Healthcare, the inpatient treatment offerings, if I was understanding correctly, were essentially closed for an extended period of time. Now, this poses an interesting situation or paradox where on the streets of Wausau, we have individuals who, because it would essentially be medically unsafe, if not reckless, to expect them to detox in a medically unsupervised situation. I mean, approaching recklessness, I think. So, if that's not possible because we didn't have adequate treatment options for a long period, and even when they're open, I'd say it's likely inadequate statistically. But then, so if they can't be in shelters overnight because they're being asked to stop using or to cease alcohol consumption in a manner which could result in kind of physical harm, then my first question would be, what worsening of the issues for these people, people as human beings, not as problems? You know, so the lack of inadequate treatment options that we've had for multiple years during all of this, what impact did you see that have kind of on, on the ground?
Well, there's a lot to your statement and your question. So, I, I don't want to leave anyone believing that there's not the ability to medically detox in our area. We have two hospitals, we still have North Central Healthcare, we still have the ability to use the Wisconsin statute 5145 to, to chapter someone. But, so, putting that aside, you are correct in that the medically monitored treatment, the 21-day program that existed at North Central Healthcare got shut down at the onset of COVID and it has yet to reopen. Now, during that period of time and now, there's a whole new facility that includes a really robust, beautiful, the, the physical structure exists and through our meetings with North Central, I'm not here to speak for them on their plans, but it's, it's coming to the conclusion to where they're going to be able to open and offer those services. So, we're very excited about that. I can't necessarily draw the conclusion, but I would say that they are related in that we have seen things atrophy here with the unhoused population. Things seem to be worse and it's a wonderful thing as a police officer to be able to get someone to the right resources. And they have to exist or be available here, so they haven't been available. And so, I'm sure that's a contributing factor to some of the challenges that we've seen, not just for the unhoused population, but for our population as a whole. Not everyone that needs inpatient care is necessarily unhoused.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And then let me ask you, so let's say we had a magic wand in the chambers tonight. We don't, but let's pretend. So, if we had one and there was universal access to treatment for all Wausonians, both for alcohol and drugs, essentially anyone who had the desire at a given time to do that, if we could figure out a, a policy way and maybe some available relevant funding, would that universal access to a treatment program at any given time, then based on your statements that alcohol and drugs seems to be a significant component, do you think that would be of, of great value then? And not just for people who are unhoused, but like I always say, in Wisconsin, you know, you've got kind of, you know, you've got cheese and Packers and, and maybe alcoholism, you know, that, those, those things are very common here. So, it's not just the unhoused. So, if we could figure out a way as a local policy body, work with our partners in the county, would that be of, of help on the ground in, in this situation?
Yeah, I, I don't think you'll ever find a police department that says, you know what, we, we've got plenty of AODA resources in our community. So, my answer to you would be, it would be wonderful to have unlimited access to AODA inpatient. And I think the key to the comment that you made that's important for everyone is those individuals who are prepared to do the work. We can take 10 people who are chronic alcoholics to rehab and if they're not prepared to do the work and rehab to be, maintain their sobriety and be committed to that, it's not going to be effective. So, and I think statistically, we, we see that across the country. But, I, I would love to see that anyone at any time that felt like they needed to go to inpatient rehab had access to it here. That would require a magic wand.
Not necessarily, we'll see, but thank you.
Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I think that, you know, if we're talking about things that we want to spend money on and magic wands, what we need really is a series of small victories. There's not, the, the path to success here isn't big sweeping reform that we can make. And I think, you know, us creating some department to manage people that we can or can't control that do this work, that is money wasted. I think when we look at these small victories that we need to see, we can't underestimate the value of things like the McClellan House. You know, and I think that in some cases, when it came to funding things like that, the impact of the McClellan House was misunderstood when it came time to recapitalize it. But, that was a low barrier to access first stop. So, if you're Tracy and you're out there and you want to, like, give someone a hand up, not a handout, a hand up, and you get that person, maybe they don't quite fit that shelter model, but you have somewhere you can put them that's not a bridge or a box or a park, and then get, get that person a roof over their head so that, it's hard to have a reasonable conversation with someone when they're in desperate, desperate survival mode. So, if you get that person indoors, that first stop, and, and there was some consumption that took place at the McClellan House, there's no question about that. But that was not a true wet house where people are just left alone to drink or drug themselves to death. It wasn't that. But it was a first stop where if you don't quite fit in a shelter or you don't quite fit in a apartment or a house quite yet, there's a place for you to go to get your feet up under you and then figure out what those next steps are. If I was going to try to find my magic wand, I would try to find a way to rebuild the relationship with NCHC for case management. And then, I would find me a new McClellan House and I would find a way for us to pay the rent for it for a year. And then I would measure the impact because when Eric Lemerand was doing the work and he had the McClellan House as a tool, he had our homeless numbers at that point cut in half. And as soon as he stopped, in the nine months he wasn't doing the work, we went completely backwards. And so, not only did we have COVID and all of these economic issues that caught up with us, we had nobody doing this boots-on-the-ground work. So, we need like five small victories. We don't need like some sweeping change and I don't think we need to change who manages whom. But, you know, I think that we can't underestimate the impact of having that first stop for somebody. That's a tool in the toolbox that Tracy doesn't have. And one of the things we talk about with her every month at Public Health and Safety is, how are things going? What are the challenges you have? And one of the barriers to her true success is that she doesn't have something like that to offer anybody right now. You know, and there was a point at which, when I've been meeting with them from the day she started, and, you know, I said, if it's a matter of the rent, we can probably in this institution find the money for the rent. The problem is, is the rent is useless paid and running this house is useless if there's no one in it to supervise the inhabitants. That's where the case manager comes from. And that's what the NCHC folks were doing for us. So, even if we pay the rent, it can't be an unsupervised free-for-all. And so, giving her the money for a new McClellan House is useless if we don't have that partnership. So, we have to rekindle the partnership or find that partner and then move forward with, with that house. And I think we would see exponentially better results from her because when you offer that case management component, right now, she is the outreach worker and she's the case manager. And so, the hours that she spends now keeping those 20 people in housing is keeping her from housing 20 more. So, it's not that we need five Tracy's, but we need some people to like, take the baton from Tracy and continue the race. And so, that isn't necessarily new city employees, but it's partners. And in some cases, it may even be a robust network of trustworthy volunteers. Sometimes she just needs someone to drive someone to the doctor or get them to a pharmacy or help them move into their new apartment she found. She's doing all of that too. So, you know, I think that, you know, we can't underestimate those resources for her as tools in her toolbox and it's not necessarily a half a dozen more of her. So, thank you.
So, just a brief comment on that. Like, I, I don't want anyone to be here to believe that the, the point of view on case management, there's a new sheriff in town who we've had a great relationship with at North Central and we're having great success in partnering and really trying to figure out, both educating us on what's available. The police are really good at saying, we want this and then we don't care about the regulations that, you know, govern the running of case management and the legalities of it. So, we're working through us learning what that looks like and how to be able to do that. If, if it is the will of, of this committee to give direction to Public Health and Safety to ask us to put together a proposal of what a McClellan House like would look like and what we would need to have that be successful, I think that's within our wheelhouse to be able to do that. There's a lot of what-ifs with that that we learned in the last process of the amount of staff time necessary to be able to do that. But, I don't disagree with you that it's a wonderful thing to be able to say, you want to be housed? Okay, let's take you to a bed today, right now, and to be able to take them there. So, that was a good thing to be able to do.
I have, I have just a, a comment on that and case management in, in general. And I agree with Alder Rasmussen is that there's a difference between outreach and case management. Case management is going to be a long-term type of management of a person. And we heard tonight that, oh, there, there's couples with kids and pregnant women, case management, if we can connect with the case managers now in North Central Healthcare, County, whatever, they know the resources of W2. We have a W2 program right over there at Job Center that deals with people with kids, you know, pregnant women. We have resources that we can connect them to. If we just keep pouring on our own employees, we're remaking that wheel over and over and over. So, my thought is, I really want to lean on our partners. I really want to lean on, you know, what the, the knowledge base of North Central Healthcare, of our county, you know, county social services. They know the web of resources available. And so, that is why I, I really suggest we continue to, to work together because it's not a city problem. It goes beyond, it's a community problem. And I believe that we need to lean on those resources that are already in place because we don't need to, I'm worried about, and we're not on it yet, but starting a new department. I, I have worked in human services for a very long time and that is going to be a tough startup. And you're going to have to get people from the ground level to learn the resources and how to, to, you know, put somebody here, how to refer here. When we have those pieces in place here, we just need to strengthen our, our partnerships. I believe we are there. I think that the partners, I see partners in this chamber tonight at 8:15 PM. So, I believe that people are ready to, to put that, that work to action. And that's where I hope our, our progress of this council goes to. We are there as a, as a part, as a, a place at the table, but we are not going to try to do it ourselves and remake the wheel. That is not a, a good path to success. Alder Denny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Deputy Chief, and I'm glad you were first tonight because, you know, I think as these, as we've already stated, there's, there's a kind of a trifecta here. We've got the enforcement, which is really the easiest piece. We've got a full police department that can enforce the ordinances. It's where do they go from here? And I'm, I'm hoping the rest that come in here and follow in to speak, pick up where you left off. Because I, I don't think it's a matter of putting five Tracy's in the police department. It's a matter of where does, where does that handoff get made? Because I, I don't believe the police department is the final solution here. So, it's the, it's the enforcement treatment. And, you know, it's disappointing to hear we have less treatment today than we did five years ago. And then the housing piece, and that seems to be the easiest piece, if it's, if it's just a money issue, but obviously it's not. But, thank you for your information. Thank you.
Alder Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I used to be married to an alcohol and drug counselor back into the 90s and, you know, even way back then, I realize, I, I could see that, you know, the monies were drying up for, for treatment. Monies have, I don't know how it is today, but there used to be 28-day programs- Monies have, I don't know how it is today, but there used to be 28-day programs and stuff that North Central Healthcare offered, and that was gone. I knew people that worked there as counselors, and that's gone. And perhaps, you know, that, hopefully, they can start up their programs again, hopefully the county can. But I know I've thrown this out there, and I've thrown this out to a person who is sitting in our chambers tonight, that, you know, working as partners with the county and with the North Central Healthcare, we've got possibly that next McClellan House right in our city, and that is the old dormitory sitting right by Marathon Park there. You know, our hands are tied because we don't own it. You know, but, you know, if it was good enough to house students, why isn't it good enough to be a stepping place for our homeless? You know, why can't we partner with our county brothers and sisters, you know, to help do what we need to do, you know, to help get, use this resource as a place for the stepping stone for our homeless? It's really hard to see this, you know, the amount of homeless that's on our street when we've got a facility in our city that possibly can be a great asset for this problem, and it's just laying there idle. Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you. And you kind of took a little bit of my thunder, President McElhenney, but thank you, because I think it's worth repeating that we have folks in here tonight who work for the county. Thank you for attending. We have folks who are elected to represent the county, thank you for attending. So I think it's really important to recognize that we have opportunities. There's new leadership at North Central Healthcare. He's the new CEO, is a great person with a big heart, and he's hiring lots of great folks. So I think we have lots of opportunities, and I love the idea that we're talking about being more collaborative. I mean, I think one of the reasons that Tracy ended up in the police department is because when you go to the police with a problem, they solve it. I've found that over and over again, even in weird moments. So I think that's why we ended up here. So thank you again for being here, and I think if you, if you don't feel like you're being listened to by the county, just recognize you are right now, right here. So thank you.
Alder Lukens.
Thank you, President McElhenney. I would just like to second or third the same sentiment. So I've worked in a number of places. I did before I moved into education, excuse me. I worked in the legal field, I worked at different nonprofits, I worked at the Job Center, I don't know, a number of years ago. And there was this issue then at the Job Center building, not as bad. But just from what I've learned, and I'm not at all any kind of expert, I've been trying to learn all I can about this. Before I was elected to this position, I was concerned about this issue. But I would also agree, from what I see in the schools, we've had students that are unhoused. And the partners, I believe that it's really important for us to come together as a community and not, you know, we have to be able to work together. What is our goal? And if our goal is to really solve it, then, you know, accusations or, you know, there's always much, much more to the issue. And I don't think creating a department in the city is going to be the answer. The money, just the money alone, where is that going to come from? So I just wanted to echo those sentiments that I think using the resources we have and trying to work together is going to be the best, but thank you.
No more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the Wasa Fire next.
Good evening. I'm out of uniform tonight, so I'll identify myself. I am Robert Bartek, the proud fire chief of the City of Wasa Fire Department. So not given a lot of guidance about what you wanted from me tonight as far as the fire department regarding our unhoused population and what we do, I'm a root cause analysis, data-driven decision-maker for you. And so I look at that. And late 2020, we started capturing data on how many people that were coming in contact with our ambulances that regarded themselves as homeless. And in 2021, we documented 259 contacts, and in 2022, we documented 294. And speaking with the paramedics that are filling out this form, literally as they're going through their computer form, there's a simple box there. Does this patient identify as unhoused? If they have a home address that they provide, which many of them do, it could be an old home address of a relative, it could be a shelter, it could be some other place, some even will put down Salvation Army addresses as a home address, they might not get marked on there. So why I say that is, is I feel that that number is extremely low. I think what you need to know is that the Wasa Fire Department EMS, our paramedics, have daily contact with our unhoused community in the City of Wasa. And what is their role? Why are they having that contact? Well, it all initiates through a 911 call for service, meaning that someone has identified that someone needs help. Either it's that person that is calling for themselves, or someone else in the community has identified that someone needs help, whether they may feel like they need help or not. You're going to get a group of very prepared, well-trained Wasa firefighters, paramedics that arrive to render care. What we're seeing with that population is that we're their access point to healthcare. I think that what you want to, as this is an expanding discussion, you bring in our partners that we work with on an everyday basis from Aspiris and Marshville Medical Center, the receiving facilities that receive these people. A lot of these patients may have chronic conditions, that they do not have a primary care provider, they may not have access to healthcare in any other way except through emergency services, through that emergency department. And so what we see is that we're that conduit. Maybe they don't need emergency care, maybe they need a ride, maybe they need a warm place, and maybe they need some comfort, some compassionate care, which we deliver. But they don't need a critical care paramedic to treat an acute problem. So what does that mean for our department? Well, as you've heard me talk about, and we addressed this last year with this big staffing surge, is our department is busier than ever. Last year, another record-setting year, 6,648 calls last year. At some point, we're going to break 7,000 calls per year. Now, we've got some staffing that's really going to help us with our day-to-day needs as far as better staffing, the rigs that we have available. We have not added another ambulance. So we still have four ambulances, we hope we have four. The fourth ambulance in the city, if you didn't know, is cross-staffed between the two firefighter paramedics that cross-staff the ladder truck, the rescue, and the fourth health med unit. And so we can reliably say that we've got three meds, and of course, we've got great partners surrounding us at Riverside and Safer, so we can pull more in. But my point is, is that anytime that we have access to our system, we become less reliable for the next 911 call. And unit reliability is the area that I live, is that's the area that we want to have units reliable at least 90% of the time, meaning that we've got a Wasa resident that has acute problem, they call up 911, and we've got prepared firefighter paramedics to meet that need. And it's highly documented, the numbers that I look at, they're nationwide benchmarks that we try to meet. And so the greater access, the more draw, the more drain that we have on our system, the less available we are for other calls. The other thing that we're not seeing, that I'm not documenting these numbers that I'm bringing you tonight, and that's been very frequent this last year with the encampments that are popping up, it's a new problem for us, but it's the fires. Campfires that are set on the islands that are illegal, we have ordinances in place that ban burning unless you have a burning permit. So we have, we get a 911 call, hey, there's a fire out on Barker Stewitt Island, there's a fire out on Fern Island. We don't have the ability to move trucks and apparatus out there very safely in the cold winter, so our firefighters got to truck it out there and meet that need, whatever it may be, and call for additional resources. Typically, what they find is people living in conditions that are not suitable for the Wisconsin weather, right? So then what do we do? Well, do we make them extinguish the fire? You know, that's, again, to Matt's point, or Deputy Chief Barnes' point earlier, it's a matter of enforcement. We are looking for direction on what we're going to do with this. I have a lot of concerns about these things. What we see, and I look at, you know, nationwide trends and things like this, when you have these homeless encampments set up, the death rate and these things are very high, they're very high. And what you see is typically a lot of the normal problems you see, the chronic medical problems that I discussed earlier, that tend to cling to this population, high alcohol and drug use, which is then high propensity for deaths related to overdose. But then we also have, in the wintertime, carbon dioxide poisoning, fires, burn the tent down, things like that, exposure. We've treated several patients this last winter for exposure problems. And so what we find more and more is that we're the access point, first access point for help out of that situation. And our only way, our only conduit for delivery is to deliver that patient to a local emergency room. And I will tell you that the emergency rooms are overwhelmed. They do not have the time and ability to handle the volume of patients they're having, let alone handling the chronic repeat customers that we bring in. So it's a growing problem, it's one that we're trying to get our arms around. I am, as I said earlier, I like to look at the root cause, and we were having a discussion in the back here at the break, I don't understand the root cause of our homeless initiative problems inside the City of Wasa. I would love to have that understanding because then that would steer my decision-making. And so if I'm in your shoes, that's what I'm looking at. Knowing that I was going to have this discussion tonight, I look to see other communities, what solutions they're coming out with, and what's new, what's innovative, what's progressive that's working. City of Madison is doing a program similar to, you know, us and hiring Tracy in that social worker role, but they, under the fire department, have hired community care paramedics. They've got a minivan, they work with a social worker, and they go out as a team to handle this. And I believe that that is a direction that you could look at, you know, either from one of our community partners, employing a community care paramedic to try to help these chronic health issues of these people and connect them to care outside the emergency systems, or it's underneath the fire department. And we could utilize that position and maybe helping some of our other populations that are vulnerable in this community. So those are a few of the concerns and some of the stuff that I'm seeing as far as a nationwide response from fire and EMS systems to the homeless communities here. Obviously, we're always available and present to handle or to meet these needs. It's a growing problem for us. We're still trying to get our arms around it and how we can best serve these people and best connect them to the resources that they need to be in, continue to serve the other needs of the community. Questions?
Alder Rasmussen. Thank you. Chief, I'm glad you brought up community care paramedics, because that's a program that we tried in Wasa. We tried it, and I want to say we tried it maybe between 2012 and 2014-ish, it was an experiment, between Wasa Fire and between the medical director at the time at the Aspiris ER. And my understanding is that program worked, it was a research project essentially, to figure out if community care paramedic would work in this community. And they looked at, you know, a finite number of folks who were essentially frequent flyers at the ER, to find out what they had. They may have had congestive heart failure, they may have had a variety of conditions, but they would then, rather than wait for those folks to be taken to the ER again, they would figure out what failure along the way, they did this check-in process, where somebody with the skills to assess the person would do this check-in process to figure out, were they taking the medication the way they're supposed to? You know, were they living independently and doing what they were supposed to do to stay out of the ER? And it could be anything from medications to people that are unstable that fall and whatever, but, you know, they're folks that were familiar faces at the ER. And I think when they were working on that trial, which we funded, it was a partnership, they had some success with that because those folks were not showing up as frequently at the ER. So community care paramedic is not new nationwide. I mean, that's worked in cities everywhere. And I think there's value in that partnership, not just for the unhoused population, but we still have a, you know, frequent flyer situation at all of the emergency rooms for folks that need a continuum of care, that maybe don't have anybody else, no family that checks in on them. And I think that between the fire department and the ER at the time, they picked the people because they kind of knew what their history was to do the study. I mean, if we would broaden an initiative like that, in terms of community partnership, that also could have an impact for us. I think, I'm glad you brought that up because we did try that and we had some success with it, it was just a very small trial, though.
Sure, and I could specifically speak to that. Community care paramedic does work.
Yep.
It's proven across the nation, we're by far not the first to do it. Again, it all comes down to funding. And when we look at what we have underneath our umbrella and the ability to continue funding, which that would need to be a full-time dedicated standalone position. You can't pull 911 paramedics from a rig to serve as community care paramedics, it needs to be a $40 person that's there for repeat visits and things like that. And the element that is first introduced to a community is typically to deal with our elderly population, which you look at the call demographics for Wasa Fire, what's the number one reason for dispatch for Wasa Fire Department? Falls. Falls, right? The fire chief always talks like, walk like a penguin, right? Well, I took a bad fall a couple weeks ago, I'll show you the bruises. Falls, and then what community in Wasa? It's 65-plus. And so falls, you know, if we want to make a positive impact with the people that we're serving the most amount of calls, say, a community risk reduction viewpoint, it's application of a community care paramedic medicine program to help with the falls program, which we're partnering with the ADRDC. Look at the, I think, February report, we highlighted that program like that. But what you're seeing, where the more pioneering in community care paramedic comes, is like Madison is doing it, is it's a joint program where they're using the community care paramedics for, and we don't use the term frequent flyers, that's not politically correct, we use dedicated customers. Our dedicated customers, we want to see them healthier and thriving, right, in their homes with lower readmissions. And so benchmarks are set, ED physician, nurse, whatever paramedic can identify this person as a potential patient for a community care paramedic, that run reports gets flagged, it gets sent over to the community care paramedic for follow-up. So it's a good program, but again, it's funding, right? It's the money.
Mayor.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up again with the community paramedic. The Madison Fire Department gave a presentation at a league conference, maybe in '21, and it was really exciting. And some of the things they're doing, they were really careful with the kinds of people that they hired and the kinds of language they spoke and what their backgrounds were. But Madison's also doing a bunch of other things kind of related to that. They have three tiny home villages, right? But they also have these pallet houses, that's kind of a step up, or a step down from a tiny house, but a step up for some folks from shelter programming. But I'm thinking here now about the community kind of EMT-type thing. You know, Aspiris might be one partner, but, you know, we have Medical College of Wisconsin, that might be, somebody would want to do something with that. Or is there something with the free clinic? I know that I talked to the deputy chief about the free clinic recently. Is there, are there other opportunities with Bridge possibly? Maybe we get everyone in that room, including, you know, you and JT, and kind of talk through what that could look like. But again, it is about the money, right? And so deciding on those priorities, we see that it makes a real difference, but we need to invest.
If we seriously start looking at this, I think it's definitely worth a road trip to Madison for a day. And they're very transparent with their program, they're publicly speaking on that. I saw a similar presentation at a state chief's conferences with the mayor, so we spoke about that immediately afterwards. But it's another position inside of a department in the city. If we could find a partner to employ that community care paramedic rather than us, it would be, you know, more fiscally responsible for the community. We'd be happy to welcome the person to our department. Honestly, I don't even have a spot to put a desk right now, but we could figure it out. So, next question?
Officer Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief. I've got a couple of questions based on what you said. One thing that I read in some North Central Healthcare memos, there's one from July of 2021, is that McClellan Street, apparently that pilot, they stated, quote, "It had a very positive impact on reducing hospitalization rates." And, you know, from what you commented on in terms of kind of the bandwidth it takes to deal with certain things, am I understanding correctly that kind of anything that our levels of government can do in central Wisconsin that may help reduce hospitalization rates would not only maybe help free up some bandwidth for the department, but likely result in perhaps significant cost savings for departments and governments as well? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, and I think you're using the term bandwidth, I think what you're talking about unit reliability and having units reliable. Of course, if we can find ways to reduce, you know, call time, meaning the time it takes to mitigate a 911 call, well, we've got units out there, or to not prevent that call from occurring in the first place, that leaves us more reliable for that next emergency. So you would be correct. It's easy to describe, difficult to solve.
Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. With regard to community care paramedic programs, I think that when that program was first previewed to us, we were excited enough about it that we funded it in partnership. And we could see that need even back then, which is, I want to say, eight to 10 years ago. But it was illustrated to us even back then that the efforts put out by the community care paramedic that's in the program, between run reduction and repeat visits to the ER and that availability factor, that position often pays for itself in savings from other areas. I mean, you're not making, you're not running the equipment on as many calls, you're not running a full crew of people.
running a full crew of people to respond to 911 emergencies because you're eliminating the frequency or reducing the frequency that that actually needs, that action needs to take place. And so I guess I would, you know, I guess just for the sake of reference, I would like to, in some of our future committee meetings, whether it, I imagine it starts in public health and safety, but I'd like to see some cost figures on what that actually costs. Because if we could chart out savings that are gained to offset most of it, that might be a conversation we're willing to have here. So I know it worked before.
I think that you're absolutely correct. I can't say I can speak specifically to our program and the money that that may have saved, but where is it being saved? Readmissions, obviously, it's saving the receiving facility. Because obviously, this, a lot of these patients that work, the homeless community are nonpayers. You know, and that's, and that's, we've got to be upfront about that. And I guess, let's just talk about what the Wausau Fire Department EMS billing structure looks like, so we're really clear about it. In 2022, we billed 5.1 million in EMS building. We collected 1.8. Our billing company, when they're done after $200,000, we've got about 1.6 of that left for supplementing the fire department. So you, so this is a municipal fire EMS is a, is a, is a community-funded EMS structure. Now, it's all over the country. This is not, we're not unique here. This is all over the country. But we need to understand that. So where does the cost savings come from? I don't think it's going to be inside the fire department budget. If we do, it's going to be really difficult to determine because I'm going to have to try to somehow calculate what units have not been deployed this past year that were deployed the previous year prior to us having a community care paramedic. I'm going to, what I think what I'm going to have to do is reach to some of the people in Madison specifically and other communities that are doing it to see what they can provide for data regarding cost savings.
Oh, and I guess just as a follow-up, I don't necessarily need it to pay for itself, but I need to be able to see an offsetting benefit that has value.
Yes.
So if that means people are freed up to do other work, I mean, obviously, when you staff a firehouse, whether they're on a call or not, you're still paying them, and they're there 24 hours a day. So, you know, if they're freed up to do other productive work, that's of value. It doesn't need to be a dollar-for-dollar payroll offset to have value to us as a community. And I think if we had, and obviously, that person then, like you said, works for the entire population, not just the unhoused population. Our trial did start with seniors and people who did not have family to care for them. So that's, that's one realm, separate from the unhoused, but I think the impact that can be made in terms of quality of life is large as well.
I'll work on some numbers.
So I would, I would like to see those numbers in the HNS.
Sure.
Thank you.
Aldra Lukens.
Thank you. Just a quick question. As Deputy Chief Barnes had indicated with the police department, that some of the officers are kind of getting burned out with that. Do you see that among any of the fire department personnel? And I don't, I don't know because your calls are probably different, but the reason I'm asking is just because on, oops, the Finance Committee, I know, I've seen, I've followed, you know, the trail of you having to hire and needing to hire employees and how difficult that has been. So I was just curious about that, are there costs to the entire community?
Sure.
If that is or if it's not, because burnout in working with, you know?
I don't have any specific data on burnout in my staff related to working with the homeless in our community, but I can speak anecdotally on it. And I think that where you see our staff becoming burned out, it's in frequent overdose calls. That, to see that on a frequent basis, our staff's extremely compassionate, it's one of our core values, you know, the finest people, finest characters, people you ever meet working inside of a department that are serving this community. And so they go about it with great professionalism and great respect to that person and hold all of our values, especially compassion at the very forefront of that. But it does have a, it does have an impact on the end. And I think that when you see this repetitively, if I'm in the field as one of my paramedics, I think, especially when you're seeing the dedicated customers, meaning we're seeing repeat people that we've seen in a similar situation and maybe seeing them downgrade, it becomes very detrimental on them because they're there to serve and save. And when we can't, it's extremely difficult. So I don't have any specific data, but anecdotally, yes.
Thank you. And I just want to make clear that I'm not asking that question either, so for anyone in the public to denigrate anyone. I've worked also with people with addiction, have had relatives, so I know, I know about that, that burnout somewhat. And so I'm asking only to get that kind of feel for it to, for all the more need to do something else, you know, and how we can problem solve. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Community development.
We come in force. You're all familiar with myself. I'm Tammy Stratz. I'm with the Community Development Department here at City Hall. I manage a lot of the housing programs for the owner side, the property owner side. So we really don't deal with the homeless population directly, but I believe what we do in our programs that we do prevent are more on the prevention side. We assist with programs to help homeowners, even landlords, to make necessary repairs so that it's affordable, so that they continue to stay in their home and not become homeless. We also have down payment and housing counseling programs to assist with those people that are ready to make that next step from rental to be a home buyer and be successful with it. And once you move them out of that apartment, now it's available for somebody else. So we like to see that, think that we're bettering those that are able to be, move up and then vacate the other one. I don't think you're here to listen to me talk because you all know my programs, my programs, our programs. Who you're probably not as familiar with is my sidekick. I think with, so I'm Community Development Department, Julie's with Community Development Authority. I think they do more of the yeoman's work, and I will let her take over.
Oh, thank you. So I'm Julie Berkemeier. I am an employee with the city of Wausau. Probably nobody knows about the Community Development Authority much, but we are a partner of the Community Development Department. We were formed in 1989 when the Housing Authority and the redevelopment collaborated together. We do affordable housing for low-income individuals, families funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So our funding is completely separate from the city. So although we're city employees, all of our funding for our rental assistance comes from the federal government. We own 46 scattered site public housing units. Riverview Terrace, a 36-unit independent apartment complex for 62 years of age or older. Riverview Towers, which is 149 units of near elderly and disabled housing. And we administer approximately 288 Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher for individuals and families. We are staff of eight, and we manage 383 participants. So we think we do a really good job with that, and we provide a service to families that use rental assistance to better themselves to self-sufficiency. Our big program is our scattered sites, or just say, the one that we manage is that we are the landlord. These 46 scattered sites are throughout the city of Wausau, and many times you probably drive past them and don't even know that they're there. We have one, one-bedroom, two, two-bedrooms, 36 three-bedrooms, and seven four-bedroom units. It's providing rental assistance for family members or households. At 30% of their adjusted monthly income is what they pay in rent. They pay the utilities of heat and electric, but we cover water and sewer, and they are provided a house. I think it gives them a sense of well-being, that that's something that they take care of, but we are there for like maintenance needs. The other program that we administer is our Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. This is probably the program that most of you are most interested in because it's the private rental assistance that we administer. So we work with about 120 landlords throughout the city of Wausau. The furthest our jurisdiction goes is five miles from the city of Wausau's limit. So we, again, house 288 participants in that program. So we have an individual that comes in, they receive a voucher, we do what's called a briefing with them. They meet with us, we tell them the program guidelines, and then we send them out into the community. They find a landlord willing to work with us. The house has to meet decent quality standards to be able to pass that inspection. At that point, we enter into a contract. So the landlords have a contract with us that they can only charge, or they charge a certain rent. We pay 70% of the rent, and the participant pays 30%. It's a great program. A lot of people love using it. Unfortunately, we only receive so much funding. So we allocate the number of vouchers that we can use based upon how much money we receive from the government. I'm sure you guys are going to have more questions about that program as well. From that program, there's like an umbrella of other programs that are under that. So Riverview Towers is one of those. We converted that building, or I should say, in 2012, we did a low-income housing tax credit, so we did $11 million renovation on that building. Gary probably got to see some of that. He was on our board during some of that renovation. It's 149 units that we administer there. So it's for the near elderly and disabled population. We provide them a very nice apartment, they pay 30% of their income in rent. We are onsite with them, so many of the residents enjoy the fact that they can come down, talk to us, we're right there to help them. There's no time limit for these programs, so they can be on these programs for years, which is a great thing because it's a permanent housing solution for them. For Riverview Towers, that building was built in 1969. We did the renovation, and again, we housed 149 people in that building. We did convert that building to what's called the Rental Assistance Demonstration. That's under the Section 8 program. So if an individual resides in that property for a year, they then can receive a voucher, and they can then move into the private. That allows for another person to come in to move into the building as well, so we can continue to provide assistance for those low-income individuals. The other program that we have is called Riverview Terrace. This was an assisted living that we recently converted, January 1st, to 62 years of age and older. It is for the elderly population to have an affordable housing option to them. It's 36 units, and we are currently at 97% occupancy. So we consider that a big success because we had kind of issues with keeping that occupancy up for the last couple of years. We also do redevelopment. We partnered with the landmark, so we helped provide funding. We provided them a low-interest loan for $900,000 to provide gap financing. So we assisted in that project so it could be completed to allow more affordable housing to the residents of the city of Wausau. We also entered into, or provided assistance with Community Partners Campus. We entered into an agreement with them, offering them financial assistance as well, so they can continue their mission to provide a wheelhouse for all of the agencies, Catholic Charities, North Central Community Action, Neighbor's Place. So they have a place where it's, where you can send somebody, and it's a one-stop shop. So we're very proud that we were able to help with those. And we also have partnered with Tammy. The most recent one that we have done is the Ponderosa. We helped assist with that, I guess, acquisition to get it to be built, and it has been successful thus far. So we feel that we are a great department already in the city, that we provide the permanent housing. We just don't provide the case management. So we work with the individuals, but again, we've worked with Tracy, we work with Community Action, as some of the agencies that we partner with on that. So that's kind of what I have.
Can you touch on the Section 8, now you've had the homeless preference?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We also had in 2020, I think it was, I can't remember. We changed our housing waitlist for the Section 8. We added a homelessness preference. What that means is when that waitlist is open, if an individual identifies as homeless on the application, we verify that with North Central Community Action through the VI Spadat, and they are automatically bumped to the top of the waitlist. Just to give you a point of reference, last time we opened our waitlist, we had 585 applicants. So we only can open our waitlist for a short amount of time, and then we have to close it. Then we have to exhaust that waitlist before we can reopen it. So we continuously cycle through that. Last time it was open in July, we opened it for three weeks, and we're already down to 231 applicants from that 585. But the homeless got automatically jumped above everybody else on that one. We also do the FYI program, that's the Fostering Youth to Independence. So we were approached by HUD to administer this program to assist young adults, 18 to 24, that were at risk of homelessness. We have to have, we have a mandarin understanding with social services and another agency that refer these individuals to us as well that we help assist. Question?
We can certainly, I have a feeling that you guys probably have more questions for Julie than anyone else up here. I'm also fully, if you have questions about affordable housing and things like that, because our department, obviously, we kind of create the environment or choose projects that we want for affordable housing opportunities. And I would also just want to drive home, which has been touched on plenty already this evening, that housing is really only part of the problem. We do have a shortage of low-income units or available for extremely, extremely low-income individuals in our community, as do most other communities. Part of that is, interestingly, I kind of fell into a couple of rabbit holes when looking at affordable housing, because when we do affordable housing that's financed by Lytec credits, by those low-income housing tax credits, which are administered by the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Association, those rents are based on area median income, and area median income is based on household income. So when you look at household income, homeless individuals aren't counted in that. So we really are automatically skewing our low-income housing to people who are already housed or where household income has been counted. So that's, I think that that's kind of a, to me, anyway, it was a helpful base to understand where we're kind of lacking in the current system of what we have been able to do with the state and where the, because we're really, to make affordable housing like that, you need those tax credits. And Julie's actually a tax credit specialist, so if you have questions about how that all works, she's, she's like our golden child of knowledge right here. But I guess, at this point, I think, I think I've pretty much covered everything and that I had prepared to talk about, but I'm sure you guys have other questions.
There is one other thing I forgot to talk about, sorry. As you all know, the city of Wausau receives the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and with those funds, 15% can assist what's called the Public Service Activities, which is, are your nonprofits. And we've partnered with many of those. We're able to assist with paying salaries for people that are doing the job. A lot of times when they make, they ask for funding through foundations or whoever, they like to see the brick-and-mortar type projects, they don't like to fund salaries. So the beauty of the block grant is that you can fund salaries, you can help them keep good people, because this is a burnout job, you know that. We've worked with Catholic charities with their programs, we've worked with Salvation Army, we've worked with Open Door, and we're currently working with Open Door with the ARPA funds to make that transition hopefully successful too. And with the block grant funds, there's a lot of things that we can do, and maybe it is, maybe instead of renting a place, maybe we buy a place that, you know, there's all these different things that we can do, and that's where you guys help us figure out what's the best way to spend the money. Yes, our Citizens Advisory Committee, 13 citizens that give up their time and effort to try to figure out the best way to spend these monies, of which, thank you, you approved our program for this year tonight, so thank you.
Okay. Aldra Rasmussen.
Thank you. Given the success of the Section 8 program and knowing that that is federally allocated to us, it's been a long time, I think, since we've seen a dramatic increase in our allocation as far as what we're able to offer in vouchers. Given the low-income housing crisis that's happening nationwide, do we have any inkling that in terms of federal funding, that that is going to open up and that we're going to receive any more of that aid to give out to our population? I mean, if we have 500 applicants, I mean, we essentially may as well figure that we have a two- or three-year waitlist to serve them all. I mean, will we ever get more? I mean...
Well, we're allocated through HUD 544 vouchers. We receive funding that we can fund 288. How that works is that with working with the landlords, they charge a rent, and there's like a per-unit cost. So when we have, we work very closely with what's called our Portfolio Management Specialist with HUD. We have quarterly calls, and they give us a projection tool that we have to use, and that tells us how many vouchers. So at any given time, just to give you kind of an example, we have like 50 vouchers out on the street. Of that 50, you might get 33% that lease up. A, they don't have good rental record. Landlords don't want to rent to someone that has five evictions on their records. We can't force a landlord to take the voucher holder. We can encourage and say, it's guaranteed rent. We can encourage and say, "It's guaranteed rent, we're there with you along the way. We have a partnership. You have a problem, we can help." But that's a big obstacle. Recently, we have payment standards, so a participant comes to us, and they want to rent a one-bedroom apartment for $1,700. Well, we can't work with that, so then they have to go back out. So they have their voucher for 60 days. So that's their timeframe. Tracy, I think, got a big learning curve with how that whole program works. Coming in, meeting with us, and then getting them out there, sometimes it's just the effort. I mean, it's effort to go out, to find an apartment. But as far as your question on funding, when HUD gives us our funding, it comes through Congress appropriations. And that's based on the review, a point in time, August of '21, this is what you expended. We're going to increase that by a certain percent, and we're going to project that's what you're going to expend next year. And sometimes we go four or five months into the next fiscal year without even knowing. They just, it's how HUD works. So it's no, it's not, it's guaran, I shouldn't say it's guaranteed, but, so they, they'll give us some, like our monthly allocation, they'll say, "Okay, this month, we're going to give you, for example, $142,000." Well, we have to use that for what we have available. So they don't just automatically, I don't think you would have to lobby.
Okay, but we've not had a year where we've not been able to use up the vouchers or the funding that we had. I mean, we're well short of where we wanted to be.
And we go through our waitlist about once a year. We cycle through that.
And it's interesting, I think, Tammy, when we talked about block grant, and the idea, the notion that, you know, there's creative things that we can do with block grant, and you know, maybe does that mean that we necessarily, instead of renting a place, we buy a place that becomes that first-stop landing, landing zone? Maybe, I don't know. I mean, we get that funding cycle open every year, and, you know, I think we need to be creative in our approach to what we can do. I will say that I've been, when we talk about low-income housing and the shortage thereof, I don't know that we got this, we didn't get this way by accident. What I'll say is, as a community, when I came on the council in 2008, at least the first six to eight years, we turned away, as former councils and former administrations, a lot of low-income housing proposals got turned away because they don't pay property tax at 100%. A WEDA tax credit project pays property tax by law at about 30% of what a standard rate-paying property pays. And yet, those facilities continue to utilize and draw the same level of service as any other development. So when, you know, you were presented with a development here or here, those councils and those government bodies gravitated to what pays the higher level of tax in exchange for those services. And so, you know, there were a number of times that I can recall that Ann Worth would come to us, and she would have an idea for a project, and some of them got through and some of them didn't, but, you know, there was a lot of them that didn't, never got off the ground. And so would we have had, I mean, had we in those years done something different, we would be way ahead in the quantity of units that are available. Now we're kind of making up for lost time, but, you know, I will say that, you know, it was, I want to say about 2015 or '16, when I started to attend, at that point, a different version of the Homelessness Coalition. And I walked in the room, and to my surprise, Tammy was there. And Tammy was the only city employee that was there, and Tammy had been there the whole time. But she was limited in what she could do at that roundtable, because none of us ever sent her there with money to make an impact. She could go and listen, and she could share their compassion, but, you know, there was never any, like, funding where the rubber met the road for her to make an impact as a municipality, like we're doing now with the funding that we've allocated. So thank you for sitting there all those years, and attending all of those meetings, because I was also there. But one of the first questions we got asked is, "You got any money?" You know, because everyone needed resources, and there's a huge need. But, you know, not to say that, and I've said before, the city was absent at that table. We weren't necessarily physically absent, but we were money-absent. So, you know, I think that the work of the Community Development Department sometimes goes unnoticed, but, you know, it would be great. Maybe if it takes lobbying for us to get an increase in the voucher funding, maybe that's what we have to do. I mean, we've done it for other things, you know? We're doing it for PFAS, so maybe that needs to be on our discussion schedule with our leaders at the higher levels of government. Thank you.
If I may just address, it's not a federal funding issue, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of it. There is a proposed increase in the governor's budget for Lytec credits from $7 million to $10 million a year. So it's, though it's an imperfect system, there is a state-proposed increase.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Alder Rasmussen kind of led me to this, and you may have answered the question. I was like, "Do I have to just go knock on Secretary Fudge's door and beg for more money?" And it sounds like maybe yes, but we do have a senator who will listen to us and who was allocated in federal budgets for us before, and so it seems worth it. I know that you've also been engaged in some efforts to make sure that our voice is heard in DC, but I guess, what can we do? I am willing to throw myself into it.
I'm not even sure how to answer that. You know, I should, you know, clarifying, each year, we do receive more.
I want a lot more, though.
So like, we do get an increase every year. You know, it's not like they've ever taken money back and said, "Well, you don't use it," but it's the "use it or lose it" philosophy. So if we don't use it all, you know, they're going to say, "Well, you don't have a need for it, but this community does." I think the housing choice voucher, so we have tried to branch away from calling it "Section 8," which is very difficult, because when I started 10 years ago, it was "Section 8." So it's "Housing Choice Voucher." You know, we receive that allocation, but each month, you know, we spend a substantial amount helping these families. And I would think a bigger effort would be, is that we work with the landlord associations, but when you deal with high rents, you take away from how many families you can help. And I'm not saying it's landlords or whatnot. I know with the market, costs for rehabbing a unit, costs for building units have gone up, and they have to, it's a business for them, too, and they have to make up those costs. But in the end, that causes us to spend more for one family than maybe one year we could have spent a certain amount on one family, but now we are on five families, and now it's down to three families we can sell with that money. It's just taking that into account, that we also work with the market on that, that sometimes landlords can drive that.
Thank you.
One other piece is with CDBG funds. We, you know, we were grandfathered into the program, but often, it's communities 50,000 and over are the ones that are allocated those funds. We have missed out on funds specific to address homelessness, because we are under 50,000 people. So we have, there's opportunities to either work with the county or an adjacent municipality to create a consortium to get to that 50,000-person mark, to be able to access some of those additional funds. So if we, I think that these, I'm not fully versed in the history of those conversations. I believe that they've happened in the past, but hopefully, I mean, with different leadership, I think in every, almost every municipality since those have happened, if not every municipality, that might be another opportunity to address that.
All right, I'm calling you tomorrow.
Alder Henke?
Thanks, thank you. I never knew your guys' department existed until I was put on the committee, so I'm honestly very impressed with how well that whole committee functions and the whole department functions. And I would just like to say I'm excited that we're looking at starting up the Redevelopment Committee, so hopefully, we can grow this, this whole group, so, thank you.
Alder Denny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just jump back just to the previous speaker and thank Chief Bartek for trying to figure out and spending some time on the root cause, because I've been spending a lot of time on that, and I don't know that we're going to find that. But I think the other thing you distinctly said was, we need to look at what other communities are doing and provide some examples, and we may not know what the root cause is, but we can see what communities are doing wrong. Like you mentioned, the Northwest, where we have enabling drug use and needles and encampments that are completely gone in a direction where we don't want to see here. So when we look at those communities, it's probably easier to see what they're doing wrong, and then maybe what we're doing better to get us to a better solution. But one, so, one of the questions I have for you for community development is, and I looked at Green Bay, they have a company over there, JBS, it's a large meatpacking plant, and I don't have the details on their, on their deal, but they employ a lot of, I'm not sure how to classify them, migrant area, or help me out here. It's a non-English-speaking groups, they don't pay very well, but one of the things that they are doing is building, for lack of a better term, like a company housing development. It's actually property that they're donating to the city to put low-income housing for workers that are employed, but are basically underemployed or under low income, where their cost to live is a high percentage of their income. So I mean, obviously, it'd be nice to get them all $15 an hour, $20 an hour jobs, but if that's not the case, you know, do we have employers in this city that we're working with that maybe can help us in that regard?
Well, we have a lot of nodding going on, which is awesome. And I can speak to one of the, Tracy, I know, like, you're like nodding emphatically, so if you want to come up and supplement, because I'm sure I don't know everyone. But we do have employers who are looking at doing housing. Specifically, if you aren't familiar with Northern Valley Industries, I highly recommend checking them out. That is, I just was introduced with them, to them a couple, I'm trying to think, a few weeks ago. They employ formerly homeless people and do some really great work. They're looking, they own a lot of land, actually, near the business campus, and they're looking at doing some housing out there. So we know of that one in particular. We do, I mean, there are a lot of companies, kind of consortiums, all over the state that are looking at doing workforce housing. Sheboygan is actually another one that, they're, County Economic Development Organization has a really deep bench of really big employers, and so there are, I think, four of them that put in $2 million each to do gap financing for housing units that they would build, not just for their employees, but for everybody in the community, without an expectation of ROI, is my understanding of the program, just because they need people, places for workers to live. So it's a little bit different between workforce housing and affordable housing, or something that's targeted specifically at, you know, getting folks from homelessness to housing. And I would want to drive home, again, that it's, you know, housing is part of the issue, but if we house too quickly, we do, you know, with underlying, with significant underlying issues, it's still case management. It's, we still need case management, because if you, again, if you house too quickly, one of the things we actually just talked about, like, I think, earlier this week, is it looks worse to have an eviction on a record sometimes than it does to have no rental history. So we need to be careful about how, you know, we don't want to, like, try to do something really great in the short term, or what we think is great in the short term, just to have it backfire long-term. Do you have any?
I was just going to comment on Northern Valley.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think we're done. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I just want something, I had told the mayor about this, but there's a conference that I encourage all of you to attend. It's called "A Home for Everyone," and it deals specifically with unhoused, and how communities, counties, cities have worked with it, and programs that work and programs that don't. So I go to it every time it's available, so I encourage you guys to...
I think we have a whole busload of folks that are interested, so thank you.
July and Ash.
Okay, all right. Nobody is in the queue, so we're going to try to move this along to number four, review Marathon County responses to the homeless. And we have the Parks Department. Hi, Jamie.
Hello. Thank you, Madam President, and the county board, or city council, sorry. I am here to talk specifically about the Parks Department role in what we've been talking about today, but I do know my colleagues from the county, multiple departments are here as well to answer some other questions, so they can come up if you have questions of them. But I, for my part, in the Parks Department, being that we are a joint department between city, county, we serve both you and the county board, and we look at this as a regional task, that we have to provide the quality parks and the quality homeless, both in the city and in the county. We mirror our ordinances for all of our parks, so that they go together, so that our Sheriff's Department and our Police Department can work together in conjunction. We have two county parks right within the city limits of Wausau, so this isn't, from a Parks perspective, it's not just a city park protocol and response that we are responding to, it includes our county parks as well. And we have two recreation deputies we work specifically with, from the county Sheriff's Department, but they also work very closely with Wausau PD. And I am here to echo exactly what Chief Deputy Barnes and Chief Bartek said about the direction on policy. We are your arms out in the community to make our community the place to live, work, and play. We are stewards of your budget dollars. We also know that over the decades, the city has put millions of dollars into our riverfront and our downtown area, parks and open space system, to make it a welcoming place. You've taken brownfields and made them into beautiful parks that people can enjoy, and that is a lot of the areas that we try to keep up on. We, as a department, do not go out and do any sort of enforcement of the ordinances without the partnership of the Wausau PD or the Sheriff's Department. We do not have that expertise, we are not those professionals that are meant to do that enforcement. However, we are hand-in-hand with them, we have a shared Google document that our department has with the Police Department that is actively ongoing, it's updated between our staff and their staff, so that we can constantly see what's going on daily. Our staff is out in our community all day long, every day. We see things, we talk to people, we notice items that need to be addressed, so we communicate that pretty effectively with our Police Department. So we do go, and if we notice something, or if we get complaints from our citizens, and I will echo again what Chief Deputy Barnes said about, we get the same comments from our downtown businesses, from our public, about safety concerns with, in the Riverwalk, within our parks. We've been tasked to try to look at some improvements to, especially Barker Stewart Island, and how we make that more enjoyable. The goats have helped to bring people to that area, but it is still something that we continue to work on, and we continue to have challenges with. We spend a lot of staff time, you got a memo from the Public Works Director yesterday about the amount of staff Public Works puts into our downtown ramps. It's very similar with the Parks Department. We do not have two dedicated staff that go out every morning and do that work, but we are basically on call. This last, or last week, there was the major cleanup downtown area that you saw today when we were down looking at the different areas, and our staff took three one-ton truckloads out within three days of items that were taken out by a volunteer organization, so it's not our staff going in this time, we are just told when there's garbage available, or when there's items to be taken away, we take them away, we filled an eight-yard dumpster. The city, in our budget and our Parks Department, we provide the porta potty and the two-yard dumpster that's down at the gazebo area every year. It's about a $5,000 item for both of those things that you fund as a city council in our budget. We worked with the Police Department to install cameras and a light down by the gazebo this last year, which ranged between $8,000 and $9,000. We did a lot of work in-house, so we were able to save some of the contracted staff time. We've had to replace, we have a pretty big issue, and this isn't necessarily with our unhoused, it's just with vandalism in general, but the bathroom that's down in the Whitewater kayak area, it's a public restroom, it's got an outdoor shower on it, it is used, but it's locked, a lot of the times it's on a timer. We've had to replace the grinder pump in there twice, because it was full of needles this last year, as well as we had to replace both doors, which are steel-core doors, because they've been somehow kicked in, and people have been found in those restrooms, living in them, until we, or even getting locked into them, because they get messed with. So it takes a lot of budget dollars to maintain just the regular day-to-day, and if we don't have enforcement or don't enforce the rules that we have, we compound the issue. So right now, we do have a lot of cleanup that will need to be done. What'll, a lot of it, too, comes from, every time it snows, and when the snow melts, you can see it along the highways, there's a lot of garbage. So it's not just one particular group or anything that's doing it, it's the fact that springtime is a cleanup time in our parks, no matter what, no matter how it's used. But if we allow some of the ability to stay in our parks and to stay there for long term, like we've had some groups or in our areas, that compounds the amount... that compounds the amount of staff time we're gonna put to that. Spring is our busiest time, too. We've got ball fields to get ready, we've got athletic parks to get ready, we've got, everybody wants to be out on the grass as soon as it's, it's nice out, and so we only have a limited number of staff. So remember, we, forty-four staff in our department, we manage both city and county facilities. We put a lot of time and effort into downtown. But we are definitely here to enforce or to, we are not, sorry, we're not enforcers, but we are here to work with Wausau PD on whatever policy you, as a council, put forward, and, and what your expectations of our parks are to be. And if you want to update our ordinances, we will update the ordinances to your wishes. We will take those, again, like I said, to the county board as well, because I mirror them. Marathon Park, if we, if we don't allow certain activities in our Wausau parks, Marathon Park's only a couple blocks away, then they go to Marathon Park. So we want to be consistent, so there is consistency along the board. And so our staff is spread thin. So if we continue the operations as we are and be reactive versus proactive, additional funding will be needed in order to keep up with what we have to do on a daily, day-to-day basis, in addition to working with the Police Department to move forward on our cleanup efforts and keeping our community a good place to be. So very short and sweet. We are here to help and move that forward and do what the wishes of the City Council are.
Aldra Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the information, Ms. Polly. A couple times, you know, at Riverside Park and on Picnic Island, I'd emailed you, some residents nearby had contacted me. One was involved a fire, it wasn't going at the time, but it was there on Picnic Island. And I think another time, I actually went with Ms. Kelch and Ms. Ledecky, because it, there'd been a, you know, a significant amount of trash had amassed near the river, and it wasn't the aesthetic issue involved with that, it was that it was just reaching almost a threshold where it was at some point maybe going to enter the river. So there were two situations, you know, one probably involved safety and risk, and the other one, I think, you know, could have gotten problematic with the river. I would note that there was no nearby receptacle for individuals to deposit that garbage, and that had, I think, contributed to the issue. But the reason I bring those items up is it was not an aesthetic concern or a matter of inconvenience. I think it's like you and the chief had brought up at times, one was a risk scenario, and, well, they, they both kind of were. But looking more broadly at parks in the downtown, and I think at least one of my colleagues have, had raised the issue of money, and I think, I know we've been going a while, we'll go a little longer, I think we're gonna see that across the board, there's a pattern and theme of money. And, you know, the question or assertion is that there's an absence of it, but really, factually and historically, that's not the case. And we see that with our beautiful riverfront and downtown, because much of that was cleaned up and developed with public tax dollars. So the riverfront, East Riverfront, that was a result, there were EPA grants, and I'd encourage my colleagues and the community to read that grant very thoroughly, because Ms. Worth, at the time, really had an extensive narrative lamenting the poverty in that area, and expressed the city's desire to help and encourage the federal government to give us monies to do so because of poverty and other issues. Well, I mean, that really didn't occur, apparently, because they cleaned up the riverfront and turned a lot of it into luxury development. So in that grant scenario, they monetized the poor, at times, the Hmong community. And, and that wasn't what we told the feds we would do. My point is, that was public money, and it should be accessible to the public at large. Same with downtown, it's an opportunity zone, you know? So that means that the government, you know, recognizes that there are potential tax privileges, because it's quote-unquote depressed area. But it was not intended to be an opportunity zone for a select few. So these are all, these are all public programs, they either involve public money or opportunities for those who are developing in them. An opportunity zone was not to come in, demolish things, and push out the poor. So I wanted to make that clear. And also, you know, under the bridge and other areas, that's District Three, you know, it's on the sign here. So if they're living there, they are my constituents, and they're not a spectacle to, you know, take a tour and just look at them or push them out of the downtown. They're to be treated like any other resident and constituent in District Three. So I guess, in conclusion, I think we need to look at risk components. But if the suggestion is, without adequate housing or offerings for people who need them, we start pushing people with no roof out of our public parks, I can tell you, and I don't have unilateral authority, unfortunately, but this district will not support that. I'll, I'll leave that dishonor to my colleagues, should they choose to go that route. I, I hope not, but I, I think we need to address things objectively, but also look at people as, as human beings and, and, and not a problem. So I understand your department faces very complex challenges, but I think we should not lose our humanity in the process. So I hope that the Police Department and the Parks Department can come up with a better option in the near and mid-future than pushing our most vulnerable people out of our park system that we pay with, with public money. Thank you.
Well, if I can, if I can react to that, just one moment, is it, it's not the Parks Department and the Police Department coming up with the policy. We carry out your policy as a city council. So the policies that are in place right now are city ordinances, and your city ordinances have rules about certain activities within our parks. Those are the areas that I am responsible for, and I work with our Police Department on. We do not make those policies, that's you as a, as a city council that makes those policies. So with that is consistency of how we interpret those policies and how you want to interpret those policies. If my family wanted to go and pitch a tent on Barker Stewart Island and sleep there in the summer, because I would do it when it's warm, I could not do that. We have an ordinance against that. So it, it needs to be consistent, if we want to change the ordinance, that's you, as the policymakers, to be able to make that direction for us to follow. We and the Police Department do not make policy. So that is what we are asking you to look at, is the policies that you have in place and how you want us to enforce those policies.
Thank you, and I think that's an excellent point, and it's not on your plate or the Police Department's plate to, to make those policies. And I see we've got room toward the end of the agenda for suggestions, and I'll be suggesting that we change those current policies. Thank you.
Aldra Rasmussen.
Thank you. Well, the tour today was telling, I have to say. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we couldn't all be there. But I think that your comment about the eight-yard dumpsters should fall heavily with all of us, because an eight-yard dumpster isn't far off from the capacity of a DPW dump truck. So think about that. That's the volume of garbage that was hauled out from under the bridge today before we got there. So when we got to the tour, we were given a folder with eighteen photos that were taken in the last couple weeks, and it looks an awful lot different than it looked this afternoon. So that said, we can't keep lamenting the situation that we have and then keep continuing the same patterns of behavior. In 2023, and I've said this in a couple other meetings, in 2023, it should not be okay, nobody in this community should say it's okay, for someone to live under a bridge, under a bench, in a box, in a ramp, in a stairwell, that has to stop. Like, and, and if, if it's gonna be considered to be dishonorable for the rest of us to say it, the camping's gotta stop. We can't keep sending up this huge cry out in the community and out in the media, every time there's a death of an unhoused person, whether it's under a bridge or not, and then continue to give people the gear to prolong that continuous state of suffering and keep sending them in there. We, we are mad about the fact that people are dying underneath a bridge, but we keep sending them in there. And then we keep making it okay to keep sending them in there. I mean, at some point, that really becomes the definition of insanity. And so we talked about having options for people. Well, we now have a day center, the day center's open. We have twelve months of the year, we have night shelter, and not everyone fits the shelter model. And so I made myself six notes of takeaways of things we want to look at from this meeting, and one of those is that first stop. Maybe we need something like a McClellan house. But the last thing we need is more camping, because that is a dangerous situation. Pretty soon, you know, and, and I think Deputy Chief Barnes said this well, this is getting exponentially worse. And so before we know it, we're gonna be to what we have in the Near North neighborhood in Minneapolis on a smaller scale. And, you know, we're gonna have a situation where it is a sad and desperate place. And, you know, have and help us if that is someone's last stop. So, you know, I think that, right now, we've got pictures this morning from DPW. We now have people lighting fires in our parking ramps. We had three or four pictures of ashes, people are lighting a fire in the ramp. They're lighting fires on Barker Stewart Island, which in the winter, the fire department can't effectively get out there, sometimes without the airboat, to put that out. So the situation isn't just desperate, it's dangerous. And, you know, I think that, you know, we have all kinds of, all kinds of accusations fly about, you know, that, that, you know, we, we are insensitive, or we don't care, or we've not done enough, or we've not spent enough. And I mean, you could write a, you could write a book on this stuff. But the answer can't be more of what is creating the issue. We can't, we can't keep engaging and encouraging people to engage in dangerous behaviors. You know, and I talked about this, like, hand up. The hand up is when somebody extends that hand to you and say, let us help you, let us get you to some services, so you don't have to live like this anymore. And one thing we learned in the coalition is that there has to be at, at least some level of discomfort to get a person to say, darn it, I don't want to live like this anymore. And then, because the work of, of doing it different is hard and painful also. That is a heck of a journey, and it's a big step for people to make. Some of them aren't ready to make it, we know that, we've heard from folks about that. But in the fifteen, in the fifteen or twenty cases where it's a conscious choice, you know, we send people out twice a year on the point-and-time count, the mayor's gone every single time since she got elected. And, you know, she'll go up and say to somebody, we have room at the shelter for you, come on, let's go. And the answer is, nope, I'm not going. That's a choice. And so are we gonna consciously allow that choice to continue where there's alternatives? And, you know, I'm not saying that there's a one-size-fits-all alternative, but, you know, at some point, I, I don't know that changing the ordinance to allow camping is the way. So I, we're, we're just gonna need a different strategy than what we have playing out right now. And if it's dishonorable, then I guess it's dishonorable, but, you know, a lot of this stuff has escalated since we have been conducting operations in such a way that we have made it more comfortable and less painful to, to do nothing. I mean, if you can get, if you get to a point where the temperature outside is zero degrees, and you can put up a tarp or a tent and a heater, and vent that heater, and, and hope you vented it properly, and get your inside area to fifty degrees, I mean, at some point, is, is there less of an incentive then to take that hand up and get into those services and do the work to get to that next step? I mean, we may be, all of the agencies that do this work in earnest, some of these efforts are a hindrance to that progress. They can't perform their mission, because this other stuff is taking place. So I just think that a different approach is gonna need to be taken, and I may be the first person to say it, but I think the camping is part of the problem. So, thank you.
Mayor.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to talk about the camping, because maybe some point last year, somebody asked me, why don't we do the same kind of thing that lacrosse is doing? And I was like, well, what is lacrosse doing? And they had a park, and they turned it into basically an urban campsite, and that's where their unhoused folks go. And sometimes, sometimes in the summer, they can have up to three hundred people in a park. And, you know, they had to put up porta potties and things, it's not the most sanitary thing. You know, I talked to their mayor a little about it, and it, it kind of feels to me like just an exacerbation of human suffering, that I would hate to see. I would hate to see that here. People didn't, it, it wasn't good. You know, there were people who needed diabetes medication, and they had little mini refrigerators and things. I mean, it was really, it was actually pretty wild to see that in America in 2022. And so I guess, I think, if we are talking about changing ordinances, I would like to maybe have expertise come in from other places to talk about what they've experienced and what they've seen. Because I, I think, you know, even talking to people with the, the biggest squishiest hearts, like Roberto at Catholic Charities, he, you know, he says that, you know, that isn't maybe the best approach, and that people should be in places meant for human, human habitation. So I just, I guess I would wanna, before we make snap judgments, maybe contemplate that a little bit more and roll it around. I think we have talked about a lot of good options that maybe we should prioritize with our budget, and I think that's a good direction to go.
Aldra Lukens.
Thank you. I would echo what Mayor Rosenberg just said, and, and I know that everything I'm, I'm saying tonight may sound like I'm really, you know, against helping the unhoused, and that's not at all it. I have a big squishy heart. Anyone that knows me will say that. But I also I think we need to be concerned about safety and safety of everyone. So the fires on the islands, that, that's, that's frightening. Fires in the ramps, that's not safe. And so I, I just think that, again, we need to look, be proactive and look at, okay, what solutions can we come up with, rather than take, you know, just one side or the other, because we, we represent all people here in this city. And so, anyway, I just, I, I do not think we should change the ordinances to allow camping, because I don't, I, enabling is another issue. I'm not saying that's just enabling, but I've worked with, I have, like I said, relatives, distant relatives, some that died of alcoholism at young ages. And you know what? There were times when I tried my hardest years ago, and if someone doesn't want it, you cannot force them, and you also can't enable them out of it. And I've also worked a lot with nonviolence and using law enforcement, using the ordinances, that is a nonviolent way to deal with something. You know, if it's respecting the dignity of someone, it's, it's actually helping keep them safe by not allowing that. So it's, it's such a complex issue. I know I risk, you know, being, being criticized by anything I say, but, but I really, really have done, have been doing due diligence, and also in listening to all of you, but I've been researching a lot for months on this issue and working with it for years with people at our house, so, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on, thank you, Jamie. We are now to some other providers, and so we have Marathon County Outreach Task Force will be the first provider to come up and give a short presentation.
Hi, I'm Sandy Kelch, I'm the Executive Director for the Marathon County Community Outreach Task Force. Just wanted to, before I start, just say a few things in regards to the Parks Department. They have been very generous in working with us and helping us keep areas clean. And yes, the pictures that you have were not what you saw today, and it was a volunteer that cleaned that up. And not in an effort to make it look nice. It's something that, for, for your tour, it was something that this individual does on a regular basis. So I just wanted to clear that up. So, I just wanted to clear that up. You know, there's a couple digs that were made about agencies and stuff tonight, and I'm not going to respond to those, because I think there comes a point in time where somebody has to put their sword down and say, let's work together. And that is what I'm going to do tonight. So first, I want to start off and say thank you to the City Council for holding this call. I know some did not want to do it, but I appreciate you being here. It's a very long day for you all. I know that you've all had other meetings and stuff, so I appreciate you being here and your desire to work together as a community to solve this issue. It's also important for us to continue meetings such as this, and, because tonight, it's not going to solve the problems. And to hold meetings and continue discussions like this. In the past year, we've lost several clients due directly to homelessness in some regard. And yes, it was not due to exposure, but the average lifespan of an unhoused person is 50. And we have seen that with the deaths recently. We have a reprieve from the elements as spring approaches to get a jumpstart on the solutions that are effective and humanitarian. When I requested the opportunity to speak tonight, I spoke with Becky, City Council President, and she had asked me to keep my presentation to three questions, to answer three questions. And I will try to keep it as short as possible, but I will answer the three questions that you had asked. I do not have an in-depth plan for our solution, but my hope is to open minds, hearts, and discussions within the community at large, including all the agencies, the City Council, the Wausau Police Department, affected downtown businesses, and concerned citizens. Because for us to have a successful solution, it will take a large-scale collaboration. And that's why I'm asking that we kind of put our swords down, stop the blame game, and work together. We truly believe with this collaboration and trying new ideas, that we will make major movement forward in solving homelessness. So, the first question that I was asked to answer is, what is the major gap in regards to serving or solving homelessness in Wausau? Despite there being many issues related to the unhoused, we feel that there's one major issue that is not properly or effectively addressed with the specific needs of the chronically and hidden unhoused. So, there's four types of homelessness. There's transitional, episodic, hidden, and chronic. We do an awesome job with, and I think Tracy can agree, with episodic and transitional. Hidden is very difficult because, just the name, they're hidden. We, it's hard for us to find them. But we're not doing a good job with the chronic homeless. And the chronic homeless is all the issues that we've been talking about tonight. The current program effectively addresses the needs of transitional and episodic unhoused population. The chronically unhoused make up 15% to 25% of the entire homeless population, and that's a national number. I don't know what Wausau's number is, but I think it's pretty close. These individuals tend to be older, have significant addictions, medical conditions, disabilities, and several mental, and severe mental illnesses. They are prone to experiencing complex and untreated trauma. And this is where the problem is. Despite the smaller percentage, they use more than 50% to 60% of resources. An individual who is chronically unhoused can cost a community $20,000 to $50,000 a year in EMS services alone. This population is also prone to being caught up in that jail-to-street cycle. And we see this a lot with our clients, and that they are arrested for a homeless-based issue like shoplifting food. Part of their bond is no drinking. And a lot of them are chronic alcoholics who cannot stop drinking on the streets. So then, they have another contact with a police officer, they are intoxicated, and they're sent back to jail. And then, we find someone who had just a shoplifting charge within a year, pages of bail jumping. And it's so hard to get unburied from that. We, as a whole, are out of touch with the reality of the individuals that exist in this situation daily. And so, what I decided to do tonight to help humanize this, because we always say, these people, the homeless, we group them all together, is I took multiple stories of our clients, collaborated them together to form a character, Joanne, to help you understand how somebody becomes chronically homeless and why programs don't work for them. Joanne is a 52-year-old female who has been on the streets full-time for two decades. She was born into a single-parent home where her mother struggled to keep food on the table. Joanne was left alone with her mother's boyfriends throughout her first formative years. The first time she was molested, she was two years old. Her mother blamed her for the hardship this caused and began verbally and physically abusing her. She was taken away from her mother at the age of eight and placed into the foster care system. She was raped several times while in the system. As a teen, she turned to drugs and alcohol to escape the nightmares and the memories of her repeated traumas. She was placed in a group home for troubled teens. She began treatment and started to thrive in this setting. However, she continued to battle with the inner voices telling her she was worthless, she was stupid, and she would amount to nothing. As she approached aging out of the system, she began to get scared and act out, because sometimes it is easier to leave than be left. She soon found herself in the hands of a human trafficker who kept her supplied with drugs. She became pregnant at the first time at the age of 19. Her daughter was taken away at the hospital addicted to the same drugs as her mother. Over the next decade, Joanne gave birth four more times, all of her children ending up in the same system that destroyed her. She was called so many derogatory names, she believes them to be true. As she entered her 30s, she became useless to the traffickers, so she was tossed out of the hotel she was living in. Over the next 20 years, she was raped repeatedly, went days without food, weeks without a shower. She had been arrested multiple times, spent months of time in jail, mostly related to her addiction and homelessness. She has been yelled at, kicked out of doorways, and spit on. She has had her possessions stolen so many times, she's become a hoarder. She has been through every agency without success and failed at multiple rehab stays. She dreams of a life she imagines the women who walked past her without a glance have, probably the same women who don't feel safe walking past her. To eat in a restaurant without the glares of others, she wants to be human in the eyes of those who treat her without an ounce of compassion. What has she seen, what she has seen on the streets, she can never unsee. What has been done to her cannot be undone. Is there hope for her? Can she ever truly be off the streets? Will she ever see herself as worthy? And she also doesn't stay at the shelter, because the shelter does not separate men from women. And she was raped repeatedly, beginning at the age of two. That is not a choice. That's survival. That's called trauma. But our answer is yes. Providing her with the right services and resources are not enough, though. This is what separates the chronically unhoused from the rest. Which leads me to the second question Becky asked me to answer, which is, what solution or solutions do you propose to end chronic homelessness? Again, I don't have an extensive plan to present to you tonight. However, I hope this falls on the right ears and opens the right hearts and maybe the right wallets. With multi-agency support and efforts, a housing-first tiny home village with onsite case management and a harm reduction model, Joanne and others like her cannot only survive, but thrive. They can achieve sobriety, employment, and in the end, find self-worth and happiness. The state of Utah implemented a housing-first, wet, harm-reduction program for 17 of the most challenging chronically unhoused individuals. That was their pilot program, by the way. They went on to do a larger-scale program with the same success. With onsite case management using harm reduction model, 22 months later, all 17 remained housed. The program had no time limits. Residents were able to use drugs and alcohol in their homes, as we all are able to do in our homes. They were provided with onsite case management, but it was not a requirement to stay there. Services did include AODA, trauma-informed therapy, and harm reduction services, along with case management. The key to the success of this program, according to one of the developers, was twofold. Meeting the individuals where they were today. Not where we are today, or where we think they should be, but where they are today. The other was the importance of building a relationship with each resident based on trust and respect. And I want to emphasize that. Building a relationship on trust and respect. This is the cornerstone of our work at the Marty Bus, which is highly misunderstood by many people who have not been down there, who have not come to see what we do and ask what we do. We have heard established clients tell newcomers that they bring to the bus, don't worry, you can trust these guys. And you can see from the story of Joanne, which again, was a story taken of experiences from multiple clients. So, these are their experiences, that they shouldn't trust another human being for the rest of their life, what happened to them. But they trust us. We take great pride in this, and we take great pride when we receive feedback from people who come to observe what we do and comment on the respectful, compassionate way we speak to our clients. We have made Marty Bus a safe place for our clients, and we have watched transformations happen. We feel this would be the right foundation in which to build a successful tiny home village. Now, I want to quickly talk about money, because that's been talked about a lot tonight. This will not be cheap, and it cannot be done successfully by cutting corners. The huts can be built for about $2,200 apiece or less. Using reclaimed and donated materials and volunteers to build, that price can drop. The real money needs to be invested in the online services. We have seen success at CPC and their services to the low-income. However, the services have not been effective with our chronically unhoused. But the model of CPC can be used at the tiny home village with services that are specifically designed for the chronically unhoused. Amanda, who spoke earlier tonight, and I've had a long conversation with Tracy Rager a few weeks ago, and we had talked about the need for case managers. And Tracy, I'm sorry, but I'm going to probably put you on the spot here. Currently, Tracy has placed multiple clients throughout the city, and to her credit, she has provided case management for many of them. However, this limits how many she can help, and that was discussed tonight, how long she can help them, and the long-term effectiveness. As a colleague in the same field, I am concerned about Tracy running the risk of burnout. And she is a valuable, valuable resource that we need in this community. If we could place the most challenging clients together in a village, we can reduce the number of case managers needed to address all the clients and their needs. Just by the fact that, I mean, Wausau's not big, but if you have a client on one end, and another client on the other end, and you spend more time traveling than if you were all together, case managers can swap and support each other, and people can get breaks when they need a break, but everybody can be served in that one spot. The other issue I think Tracy can agree is getting our clients to attend appointments. If we bring the appointments to them in a safe environment of the tiny home village, we can be more successful in that. Volunteers can be trained in trauma-informed procedures and can insist in the daily running and management of the village. Some villages have even provided employees with their own tiny home. That is something else to consider, that we could provide free housing to students in social services that can help in the day-to-day operations. It's just all about creativity and thinking outside the box, doing something different. Tracy is one of our most valuable resources in the city in regarding the unhoused. Her experience, knowledge, and dedication could make a project like this a huge success. And we would strongly advise utilizing Tracy in a project like this. Other agencies can collaborate, can provide services and resources that are appropriate. Downtown businesses can join in and provide job training and coaching. Officers can form relationships that are positive, rather than having to arrest those they simply wish to help. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to say, you know, we work a lot with Wausau PD. And sometimes, I'm sure they wish I didn't exist, and other times, we get along great and we collaborate and have very positive outcomes. But I will say, we have never experienced, had a negative experience with the officers when we've had to call them to assist us in helping the unhoused. They are compassionate, and they would rather take them to a place that's warm and safe that's not jail. But many times, they're forced to take them to jail. A tiny home village, I think, would help eliminate a lot of the petty crime that we see, a lot of the ordinances that are being broken, and then put officers in a place of positive interactions and support, rather than the enemy. Medical care and support can be provided by the free clinic that exists in the CPC building. We did have a conversation briefly with Dr. Oswald a while back about an outreach program, and he was very interested and positive about that possibility. All these collaborations will not just increase the chances for success, but it will reduce the costs that are draining our resources currently. One of the greatest challenges in placing the chronically unhoused into housing is their desire to help friends and people they consider family. Tonight, we are talking, or today, we were talking earlier with one of our clients, and he referred to his friends as his brothers and his sisters. And that is truly what they are. They are a family. Imagine if a police officer or agency employee came to your house and told you that everyone in your family will be housed, but they'll be all separated from you in different parts of town that you don't have access to. This would not be acceptable for you. And currently, that's kind of what we're doing. We're placing them in housing and telling them that they have to follow these rules, which I understand that the rules are in place for a reason, but some of the rules prevent them from socializing and having guests and having their families stay over and those kind of things. And so, a tiny home village would encourage that with them, to be a community and be together. Or if your home was destroyed in a fire and you were told only you could get housing, but everyone that you loved had to stay outside, you wouldn't find that acceptable either. And that's what a lot of them are told. Because the fact of the matter is, even though we do have a shelter, it shelters 30 people. There are more, many, many more than 30 people on any given night in Wausau that are unhoused. So, we can say, we don't want them living on the bridge, we don't want them living in the boxes. Not a single person in this room wants them to do that. But you have to follow it up with, where do they go? Where do you want us to take them, so they don't have to live- don't have to live like that?" And we don't get those answers. I asked a police officer who told me to get them out of the gazebo, "Where do you want me to take them? We will take them there. I don't care as long as I don't see them," was the answer. And so, that's not an answer, and that's not a solution, and that's cruel. And right now, I would rather see them in a tent, under a bridge, without frostbite, than to see them frozen to death in a doorway with no supplies. In a tiny home village, everyone will have their own space with a locked door and still be in close proximity to those that they love, including a support system of professionals. Utah reduced their unhoused population by over ninety-one percent statewide in ten years after they launched this program. I truly believe in my heart that if we set aside inter-agency disagreements, if we can work together as a collective humanitarian force, that we not only reduce homelessness, we can end it in regards to chronic homelessness. And the final question that Becky had wanted me to answer is, how does this involve the city council? We would like to work with the city council in identifying a city-owned lot or building in which a village can be built upon, grants, whatever funding the city can provide, in addition to other grants and funding that we could raise. Additionally, to provide the zoning necessary for such a project, allowing the current outreach specialist, Tracy, to continue in her active, in her role, but be very active in this project in providing funding for additional case managers to take the load off of her. I understand this is a huge undertaking. I understand it'll take a lot of time, a lot of processes, which is why earlier I had suggested a safe zone camping spot as a temporary solution. One city that I researched had a safe zone camping spot, which provided lifesaving materials and stuff for people to survive while they were building a tiny home village on that same site. And so, the residents of the campsite actually built their own homes with the help of supplies and volunteers. I ask that you see this as a long-term investment in lowering the financial strain of chronic homelessness in Wausau. Finally, I'm requesting that you all approach this issue with hope, support, and open hearts. Think of the Joannas in our community, who we have failed throughout her entire life, and we now have the opportunity to change that. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I don't know. Alder Rasmussen?
This may be a preliminary question, but I, when I was looking up tiny home villages, I came across a study from, I don't know, this was an article from last year, Portland State University Homeless Collaboration Collaborative did a study, and they have a number of tiny home villages there. Are you familiar with those at all?
Maybe that, not that specific one.
Okay. Well, what they said is, what they found is, and there are always pros and cons, of course, but they found that they were used largely as a transition step, so not to be permanent.
Right.
So, that's what, that's what I was curious if you've come across that. And they said that the model's increasing in popularity, but the researchers concluded that a required and thoughtful approach that doesn't shuffle resources away from long-term housing solutions, you know, be done. So, that's a tall order, and you've spoken to that. But I know that they, the funding for their tiny house villages were from other donors to grants or whatever.
Right.
So, I, I just didn't realize that, you know, when they talked about that being transitional, makes sense. So, I was just curious if you or Tracy have come across that at all.
Yeah, there was one village that I, and I, and I don't remember the name or the city, but it was a larger village. I know it was a thirteen-point-eight-million-dollar project. It was a very large village. They had a certain portion for the unhoused. They had a certain portion for low-income that just, you know, they were able to move in and pay rent. And then they also had a certain portion for Airbnb stays, and that was the way that they helped make money. We have, not recently, but when we were looking at a community center in town to build a tiny home village in the parking lot, we went down to Madison, spoke to Occupy Madison, and we toured both of their, now there's three. At that time, there was two villages that were highly successful. Some of them stay there long-term, and they work there to support the village. And so, I know there's a wet house in Minnesota that kind of follows that same thing, where it's meant to be transitional, but for some, it ends up being their last home. But going back to what Lisa has said time and time again, you know, what is worse? You know, kicking them out and them dying under a bridge, or saying, "It's okay if some people, this is their permanent spot." And if they never overcome their addiction, but they die in a bed surrounded by people that they love, that's a win-win to me. We can't save everybody from addiction. You have said, you said that yourself, but I think the majority of people that come in will get good night's sleep, which does not happen in a shelter. It does not happen in a box. It does not happen in a tent in the winter. Sleep deprivation is rampant in the homeless community. If they get stable sleep, services are there. If they, they want them, it's more effective that they come and ask for them than to be continually require them to participate. Most of them will transition out, and if we have some permanent residents who just never are able to get to that level, that's okay, too.
Thanks. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. Yeah, I think if we were to look at a tiny home village model, which we've talked about before, I think you're right, the case management component is key. Any of those solutions have to be low barrier. You can't be required to be in programming to get there. I think, though, that the idea that it would be transitional and that those homes would either be able to be reassigned or reused to serve other people at the same time, I think is key. Do we have any guess as far as where this might be? I know that you had tried it in a neighborhood and that the neighborhood feedback in the surrounding area was not conducive. Is there any site that you have in mind?
You know, we, we've looked and looked and looked. There's a few that we have talked about. Some are private and way out of our fundraising abilities. Ideally, a building that can be a community center and a kind of a home base for the outreach workers with land around it. You know, we're looking at, I think it's land way out, still in the bus line, but at the very end of Riverwalk, there's that county concrete, I think, factory there that's no longer being used. There's a lot of land there that's not in direct conflict with the residential area. There's no businesses that would be of concern there. They would be in their own place, but still on the bus line. I mean, on the bus line has to be considered. I know there's, you know, I talked with the Northern Valley land, but then they're way out, away from support services and stuff, and isolated. So, yeah, I, you know, I, I got a map, and I'm so, I'm just not a developer. So, when I got this map of lots that were available, there was a lot of symbols. I didn't know which ones were truly available, which ones weren't. But we would definitely be open to solutions. Ideally, a building with a large lot.
Well, and so, interestingly, it came to me a few weeks ago. I had a resident that had called me and, and brought up a suggestion, because not only do you need to be on a bus line, but you need something semi-private as well, that's partially screened. And so, you know, that resident suggested to me that the lot the city owns already that fits that criteria, not only is it large, semi-private, on a bus line, that site happens to also need some environmental work. And so, we've committed to clean that site up to residential standards. And if we do it, the resident suggested to me that we consider that use for thirteen-hundred Cleveland Avenue. So, formerly desired by the CPC, but the CPC needed to build so quickly that we couldn't react
Yeah.
... to the cleanup needs of the site in time for them to build, so they moved on. That site remains unused, and now we've moved the proposal for the DPW garage across town. So, you know, that, that may be an option, just based on the characteristics of the site, depending on what level of cleanup needs to happen and on what timeline. That was the only thing that came to my mind as you were talking, is where can this possibly be, you know, that will, it will fit and function effectively. But I think if it's transitional and it's managed properly, it's an option. So...
And keep in mind, too, with Occupy Madison, when they first found a neighborhood and they were able to get it through with the opposition, the neighborhood was a hundred percent against, obviously, against them being there. A year later, after the village was up and running, the neighborhood embraced them. The second village went up, and there is a high-rise, high-end apartment building being built right next to the village. So, you know, that's kind of always our point, is that the stereotypes, the safety concerns, and all of that, you know, is everybody that's unhoused safe? No. Is everybody housed safe? No. But if you go down and you speak to the majority of our clients, you will walk away surprised. They are funny, kind, caring, and they take care of each other, and they watch out for each other. And they watch out for us. We have never had a physical altercation on our bus. We've had verbal altercations, mostly stemming from somebody who felt that somebody was being disrespectful to us. So, you know, with that in mind, I think a neighborhood will be against it initially. But I think once it's up and running properly, and their services are in place, and they find out how funny and caring and kind and willing to help our clients are, it'll change their mind.
Well, and I think, I think the key is that it's a semi-controlled setting as well.
Yes.
You know, I think that's, that's a vastly different occupancy than urban camping. So...
Yes, yes.
I mean, I could support something like that if it's, if it's run properly. I think it's got some potential. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Sorry, this will be really quick. Just, I've worked with a lot of students with trauma, and I would say the same thing as far as the trust thing goes, that if they know, if they feel respected and safe, I could leave my phone or anything there, and they would not take it, you know, give my keys to go run out to the car to get some things. But it, it has to be that dignity aspect and the safety.
Yes, yes. And, you know, and I have to say, my son lives in Riverview Towers, and when Julie Berkheimer was up here talking about the program, what she did not mention is the respect and kindness that she and her staff show the residents. My son lives in Riverview Towers. He moved, he's disabled. He's quadriplegic, and he moved from another HUD housing unit where they were threatened if they spoke out. They were threatened with five-day evictions. They were, lived constantly under fear of being thrown out. Many of them don't have families. And that's what I saw in low-income housing until we moved to Riverview. And it's totally different. Julie works hard at helping keep people housed, and not just keep people housed, but those apartments are beautiful. The maintenance on the building is immaculate. I have yet to find a speck of dirt in the common areas. I mean, it is, but it's the way her maintenance crew and her office crew talk to the clients or to the residents. It's, it's incredible, and it's, it's amazing what respect and trust can do in a situation like that.
Alder Gissman?
Thank you. I'm just going to come back to Mr. Larson's suggestion a while ago with regard to UW storms. I know several years ago, I think that there was some tours that reported back that there was people looking at it as this type of a facility. With the cooperation of Marathon County and North Central Department of Social Services, is, is that still a viable solution, or is that pretty much gone away? I think, I'm just looking at it as a possible solution until something maybe more permanent is, is aligned. But I
Yeah.
... I just wanted to follow up because I know that was talked about through the years.
We have the county administrator here if you, sorry, if he wants to respond.
Well, I bring it up because it involves, you know, the county. It involves North Central, healthcare, for, for manage, for case management. It involves social services. It involves, but that's their job.
Yeah.
That's the county's job, really, with regard to helping people with addictions or mental illness. That's their job.
Yeah.
And I think that they have to be a part of this in, in finding solutions to, specifically as you recount the, the eloquently, really, the, the chronic issues that face homelessness. So, I'm, I'm, I think we really just have to be quite forceful, and I hope that public health and safety brings Marathon County, as well as, you know, the departments in North Central into this. But my initial question was with regard to the dormitory.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice consideration, a nice maybe second option, or, you know. I, I just know with my clients, many of them have lived outside for decades, and to move in an enclosed indoor area would be difficult for them. And with the, the benefit of like a tiny home village is that you do have like a courtyard common area that's outside. Watching the, the one, one of the developers with the Utah program had spoke of a woman that was on the streets for twenty years. She was a chronic alcoholic. She slept out by the dumpsters her first couple nights there. And, you know, I think in a dorm situation, it would be very difficult for someone like that then to transition happily. It's almost like growing up here in the ocean and then moving into the, you know, New York City, you know. It, you know, it's, it's, you know, I think for successful transitioning and accepting of services and comfort and happiness, which all have to be considered, you know, something more where it's a community outside and inside-outside, you know, kind of thing would be a better option. But the dorm is not out of, you know, question either.
Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I'm, I'm happy to hear that Alder Rasmussen is committed to cleaning up to residential standards, you know. Now, that can mean a lot of things, and actually, if you ask a polluter in their handbook or playbook, sometimes they'll just cap the whole darn thing and say, "Hey, we did it now." That, that's not gonna cut it. But luckily, we have commitment from the Public Works Director. He's told the whole council by email that we will be submitting an EPA application. And so, yes, I think, you know, it's about level of cleanup. And from what I'm hearing now, the city has kind of, you know, had a revelation, and it will do it as, as well as possible. So, that sounds positive to me. And we'll, we'll do the EPA application. I think that's what we've been told, correct, Mayor?
Yeah.
The microphone, please.
I believe we all got the email that you're referencing. Thank you.
Excellent. So, we'll do that, and we'll need to be in touch with the DNR and EPA about that. But also, this would be a great opportunity from that Southern Lot Line on Cleveland to the homes on Chellus, that we finally, as a city and not with the residents having to fight for three years, being called conspiracy theorists, only to find out it was all objectively and quantitatively verified. I think this would be a great opportunity that we work together with the state to finally test and clean up the rest of the mess that the Connor, you know, Connor and the city likely left there for forty years between that Southern Lot Line and Chellus. So, I Southern Lot Line and Chellis. So I could be enthusiastic about seeing where a really good cleanup goes. Thank you.
Can I ask, like, how long does that, would something like that take?
It could be a while.
Okay, like, a while is years?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But, I mean, you're working with the right people with the EPA being involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Educational presentation, United Way Housing Task Force, Ben Lee and Diane Senholtz.
Thanks for sticking with us. You too.
Yeah, sorry. I'm not a county employee, so I'm not used to my meetings going this late.
And our presentation is more of, you know, what what's happening in our community surrounding homelessness and near homelessness, so.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of opinions for you tonight. We just have a lot of facts. This is the work we've done. So if you can go ahead and go to, you can skip the agenda slide, you can go to the next one. I want to be quick. It's like almost 10:30. But this is a list of all the partners currently that are part of the Housing Task Force. And so to just be really brief about it, you've probably heard the Housing and Homelessness Coalition, you've heard of the Housing Task Force, you've heard of the North Central Continuum of Care, the Wisconsin Balance Estate. I've heard all of those things get thrown out. When I started at United Way, I was tasked to look at the Housing, or the Housing and Homelessness Coalition, and find out if it was effective and ineffective. The answer to that was it was ineffective. The last thing that they had accomplished was opening the Wassa Warming Center, and that was 10 years prior to my starting. And so, it was my recommendation that we dissolve the Housing and Homelessness Coalition, and we created a more focused group. And the police department beat me to it. They started what's known as the Housing Task Force then. And then in working with Ben Bliven, he felt like United Way was the appropriate torchbearer to take that task force and really carry it forward. And so the Housing and Homelessness Coalition now resides in Diane's North Central Continuum of Care. And so anybody that was part of that coalition, we transitioned over to Diane's group that still meets quarterly. And the partners in the Housing Task Force are only meeting by invite. So you just can't come to a Housing Task Force meeting. You have to be invited, and the group actually votes on who we're going to admit to that task force. And that's in part to make sure that our objectives stay clear, and that the group stays small, and that we can be nimble and flexible to the community's needs. You can go to the next slide. So I'll give you just a quick recap. So this is just a recap of the January point in time count. So Diane hosted. I lead the downtown team every year with the mayor. And in the 2023 January point in time count, it was 27 degrees. And so that was a rather warm point in time count for January. 16 unhoused individuals is what we came across. And and that was mostly between my group, which was downtown, split with Tracy's group, which is the other downtown team. And so, and then shelters were near capacity, but neither one of them were at capacity that night. And then the rest, I'll, our prevention effort outlines here that I'll let Diane outline for you.
Yeah, I don't really need to go into detail, but, you know, our biggest, our biggest efforts in this community with North Central Community Action Program are preventative efforts to homelessness. So these are just some stats. We rolled out the WIRA program, the Wisconsin Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It's a COVID program. Before that, it was RAP. So there's WIRA 1, WIRA 2. These are just WIRA 2 numbers. So just here, Marathon County alone, we did help 283 households with $916,000. That's a lot of money. We kept a lot of people housed. Last year, we have our, just our normal emergency housing assistance fund, which the United Way, I write that grant, and the United Way funds it. We helped 240 households with $156,000. Now, that program is really just a one-time assistance program where we're that that we could help people out for 18 months. But EHA is really for people who are low income, and they come across a crisis in their life, whether that be a medical crisis, a car, a huge car repair, kids getting sick in the households. We want to be there to those, for those families, those individuals who need that one-time rent assist, and then they're usually okay. So that's what EHA is all about. HHP is a homeless prevention program, but that's a grant I write every year. It's a state grant, and we can house people from three months to 24 months. And to be eligible for that program, you just have to be on the verge of homelessness. You don't have to be homeless, but you have to, you have to have some mitigating circumstances as to why you are going to lose your, your housing. So that's a really wonderful program. We also have tenant-based rental assistance. That is a program much like Section 8 or HAP funding. That's where people can, and we, we kind of reserve this for the families, because it's really, really hard for families to get multiple months of housing. So TBRA helps a lot of our families in the area with several months of rent. And this program, so if they're working, they can pay 30% of their income towards the program, and we give that back to the state, or we actually reuse it in the program. So it's not like they're giving up, it's not like they're not paying their rent, but they're paying just 30%, because we all know, I mean, I have very few clients that pay 30% of their, of their income, household income in rent. It's always way more than that, you know, 50 to 60 to 70%. And some people are okay with that. A lot of people can make it, but there's a lot that can't.
And then, from a United Way perspective, between our emergency shelter programming, which we facilitate through the federal government, and then our funded partners, we fund about $356,000 a year in Marathon County initiatives. So that's between the Salvation Army, the Warming Center, Hope House Sober Living Program, things, things of that nature. And so, all in, cap in 2022 did about 1.2 million in the region, and then add in United Way funding, and we're sitting at about $1.6 million investment in just housing resources. So. So one of the, I did want to go back to the previous slide and just leave that up there for a second. So that's just a snippet of some of the services that exist in the county. Most of those services are represented on the Housing Task Force as well. And so, as we go into this next slide, though, I came into this conversation full well, hearing the narrative that the county wasn't involved in, in any of these initiatives. And so before I let Diane kind of go into this program, the county also runs the Family Keys Program, which I sit on the local coalition for that program, run through social services. I think Krista's, Krista's here still. But that, that program, like, if you followed that at all through the county board, we had to really like drag that thing over the finish line. And, and so I, I do want to just take a moment and eliminate the narrative that the county is not involved in things, because the county, the Family Keys Program is, is a major initiative to keep children and their, and their caregivers together, their parents together, especially to make sure that you're not losing custody of your children because of lack of housing. And that's a big deal in our county. And, and so, when we think about what does county involvement look like, I don't want the base level to be, well, they're at zero right now, because that's not the case. The county has active members on our Housing Task Force that are there, part of those conversations. They were part of the conversations of the cold snap that we just recently had, that we had to, you know, get beds together for, that we had to make sure that Salvation Army could expand their, their beds, make sure that open door was open. And so it's not necessarily a zero. And then we also wanted to just bring this up, because this is a new program to our county that not a lot of people are aware of right now, but it is an example of something that should be scaled for the population in our county.
Right. So I want to talk about that, because I think a lot of people, like Ben said, didn't, aren't aware that Marathon County is really, really involved. They've done a lot. In fact, they're champions in our state with regard to AODA programming, and Drug Court, OWBI Court, a Justice Advisory Committee, and judges involved with the Justice Advisory Committee. I mean, they are champions, and we need to recognize that. They don't get enough credit, because I think people aren't talking about it. And I really wanted to bring to light that, you know, there is a problem with AODA issues and the chronically homeless. And Marathon County has supported the implementation of Drug Court, and has worked with Attic for many, many years. And Attic, actually, Department of Corrections, I think, bought the, it was like a CBRF on Bella Street. Doug, you know where that is. It was across from where your office used to be. So that's, that's a very good program that's, that's starting. And, you know, it can, it can handle up to 18. Department of Corrections referred people with an AODA diagnosis. And currently, they have 12 patients, but they can go up to 18. And those patients, they get 24/7, 365 care. So they are managed all around the clock, and that's a wonderful thing. During the day, they go to Attic for full-time day treatment services. That's huge, because that's going to really help those people get well. And, and that's what we want. So I just, I wanted to bring that to light, because a lot of people don't know about that. And Attic is also writing a grant, and it's, it's pretty much, I think they're going to get the grant. I mean, it's pretty much a given. And it's a five-year grant. And with that grant, they're going to do a street outreach with a street outreach team. So they'll have a caseworker, they'll have a peer support worker, they're going to have a recovery, a substance use and mental health counseling person, to provide comprehensive services to the person wherever they are. And we're partnering with them, because they want to, they want to work with some of our clients, because some of our clients aren't housed. So this, this new program is to actually go out, like I said, to where those people are, and to start providing services, and to, to wrap their arms around them, so to speak, get their trust, and when the time's right, roll them into housing. Like, our program, our programs that we have at our, at our agency, we would love to have people who want to be in our housing programs, want the assistance to help them recover. We also run a permanent supportive housing program at our agency, where it's housing-first. So we house them, but we can't mandate any services. And I will tell you, there is a low success rate with that. I'm not saying that there isn't success, because there is. But it's a 40% sex, sex, can't even say the word, success rate. Yeah, it is late. But, but we do have that program here in Marathon County, and we started that program three years ago. It's much like Catholic Charities Beyond Shelter. That program is a wonderful program as well. So there, there is a lot of things happening to help these folks. I'm not saying that more shouldn't be done, but I just want you all to know that there is a lot being done. It's not a problem that started, or that happened overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. But we are working together. I mean, all of us work together daily.
And so when we talk about, you know, the leverage of coalitions and task force, if you want to go to the next slide, in two short years, these are the 10 accomplishments of the Housing Task Force. So Tracy's position and the pilot program came out of the Housing Task Force. We street limed the after-hour services program, so that there was no more confusion about when you present after hours and there's no room for you at a shelter, what do you do? Where do you go? We implemented, the Housing Task Force implemented the McClellan House. It's the first of its type in a housing-first situation in the Wassa community, and it worked. And so when, when we think about things that worked, that are worth investing in, we think that's one of the solutions. We don't think it's the only solution, but it's definitely one of them. We know that it worked. And we'll see it, we'll see it later, but we just, we simply lost the funding for it. That's, that's what happened. And a reimplementation of that funding and a repartnership with North Central Healthcare could put that program right back on track. We're currently working on implementing local case conferencing, which has never existed here. Any community that has ever done unhoused work correctly is doing weekly local case conferencing sessions. And so, United Way has agreed to host those and facilitate them out of our building. But there's rules and regulations that come with them. There's certain confidentiality that comes with it. And we can't move forward until we have agreements in place with every provider that shows up. And so we're hoping end of April, we can launch those, those case conferencing sessions. The big one is Diane and I both sat on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee that was created by the city, and we made the recommendations that were given to this body, and most of them were accepted, one of them including a $1 million investment or around that in affordable housing builds. And so that came out of the Housing Task Force. You notice the ongoing prevention efforts. I like to highlight that, because when we talk about $1.6 million in prevention efforts, I would hate to see what our community looks like without those prevention efforts, without that investment. And so while, yes, there is a problem with the chronically homeless, and we are wrapping our arms around it, we can't forget about the prevention efforts. The people who are almost homeless, but because of the services that exist here, we make sure that they never fall into that position. Recent win, we, we were the advocates in the idea of a 365-day shelter and the daytime servicing option that's now going to be run through open door. Both came out of the Housing Task Force, first time that the Wassa community has ever seen, one, a historic investment of $829,000 and that, but also either one of these services. And then, we advocated and secured those ARPA dollars for the Affordable Housing investment. And then we continue to occupy seats on that Affordable Housing Subcommittee to make sure that we're being heard and that we're having a say in that. Eight of those 10 accomplishments are brand-new to this community. They've never been services that have existed here before. And so, four of those eight have not even had their feet touch the ground yet. The day, the day center's been open for like one week, hardly. And we haven't even seen ground break on some of the affordable housing builds that we anticipate coming. And so, some of these things, somebody had set it up here, some of these things are going to take a little bit of time to come to fruition, but they're in motion. And then, just what our opinion on the gaps of services in, one, the McClellan House. We think we could have more McClellan houses. I hear the, I hear and I agree with the more Tracy's. I, I like that idea, but where's Tracy supposed to go with some of these individuals right now? She's got to have a pipeline of services in place for these individuals to be able to access. Robust transitional housing services, and that means sobriety care as well. So one of the most successful agencies, again, a county-funded agency in our community, is Hope House Sober Living Program. I see the metrics on sobriety living programs every single three months. And nobody has the success rate like Hope House Sober Living does in this community. However, they have one case manager, and they can house four people at a time, five. And sometimes those people take five to seven years to get through the program. And so the bandwidth isn't there. I would call up North Central Healthcare right now and say, I'll throw money at you to be able to scale that to the size of our homeless population, because that's a tried and true method that we know works. And what works about it, it's the 24/7 wraparound care. It's having somebody there 24/7. And then, one thing that we're really excited about is, we, we're aware of this idea of people aren't going to, to the services, they're not going to the agencies. So every year, I get a Medical College of Wisconsin intern assigned to me, and they work on a project for us. And this year, Riley, who maybe some of you have talked to or heard from, I know she's worked with some of our community partners out here, is going out and giving the unhoused population a survey directly to them. So it's the first time that we're going to have actual data from the unhoused population that says, why aren't you accessing services? And then we're going to use our influence with organizations like Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, to say, they're not coming to shelter because of these reasons, and we fund you, so let's fix this. Because if people aren't coming to shelter, because the rules are too strict, or because they got a 10-day ban because they lined up 10 minutes early, that's unacceptable. And because we're a funder in the community, we can leverage that and say, we have to fix this, right? We have to find a solution to this, because our services should be accessible to individuals. And so Riley is currently doing that right now. She is working with our, I know she's worked with Salvation Army already, with Catholic Charities. She's going to go out with Tracy and survey people out on the streets. And then when we get that data back, it can give us a little bit of an idea of why do our agency's services feel inaccessible to some of the people who need to receive them. And that's it. Do you have any questions? Sorry. We got a couple here. Okay.
Aldra Denny?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ben and Diane. So more outreach case management, where would you envision those be located? I think there was, there was a suggestion at one time that United Way was a more appropriate spot for some of this work than, say, the city.
You know, it's, so again, it comes down to funding. I would argue that I'm in a worse funding position than anyone else's, because I'm donor dollars. And donor dollars are, are, you know, limited. I can tell you, United Way wouldn't really have the bandwidth to house five outreach case managers right now. case managers right now. I don't have an opinion on where those people would exist necessarily. You know, when we recommended Tracy's position, we recommended the position. It wasn't up to me where that position existed, or all that mattered was that it did exist, and we could get it out there. And it ended up being at the police department for the pilot, and then it just worked there. So yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily have an opinion on, as a citizen, I would be like, "Where's that money coming from?" If it's-
Well, funding aside, I guess I'm not suggesting that we burden you, but if there was a, it's been suggested there's better places for the, you know, like I suggested earlier, Tracy has her engagement, and at some point, we want her to hand that off to a more permanent solution, and so she can keep on the trail.
Well, I think, I think case management would reside with a housing program.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because when you want wraparound services, it's that 24/7 that really helps people, you know, so.
The other piece is, and it worked in this community, was public health nurses. Years ago, there was a grant that funded the county's public health nurses to be outreach case managers, essentially, and it worked really well. And the reason it ended was because the funding ended. It's kind of like the story of any good services life, right? Like, the funding ends, and then unfortunately, the service has to end.
Thank you. I just want to thank Ben and Diane for hanging in there with us. I know the hour grows late, but I have to say, I have been a part of an awful lot of coalitions and task forces since I came to serve in local government, and I will say that this particular task force is the most successful and productive that I've ever served on. And part of that is because, as the leader of the group, when Ben brings us around the table, he brings the people around the table that can actually make a decision, or get a decision out of their agency to get those boots-on-the-ground things rolling. And so when you see those, that list of accomplishments, think of how many of those decisions got made and paid for here. And so when I talk about a unprecedented revenue source with our ARPA dollars, and the ARPA dollars that we've approved, half of that list got funded from here. And so that really is what success looks like, and so that's why the mayor and I continue to serve on that coalition, and we're proud to do so, because it's getting results. I was a part of the original coalition, and we had an awful lot of people that did a really, they offered great services, but there was not a lot of networking between them, and there was not a lot of knowledge of who did what, and how to get people from point A to point B. And they were solving a lot of this on a case-by-case basis. Well, the problem was growing way faster than you could handle one case at a time and call it success. And so this new model of getting the decision-makers around a table, and then figure out who has to pull what levers to get stuff done, has been hugely successful. So, thank you for that, and thank you for presenting tonight.
Thanks.
Aldra Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say to both of you, thank you for what you do for the community.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I do have one last comment I wanted to make, too. When we talk about more outreach case management, and I think it's important to note that outreach case management isn't just for people who are experiencing homelessness. And so something to consider is that 48% of this city lives paycheck to paycheck, and is considered the Alice population. And so, when you consider outreach case management, for everybody who needs it, that's a lot of people in the city of Wausau. In Marathon County, it's 29%. We see it go down, because, you know, some of the villages don't have the level of poverty in them, as, you know, some of the neighborhoods here in the inner city do. And so, just keep that in mind, that five case managers isn't enough. It's certainly not enough. And then the other thing I just wanted to answer was, Alderman Gisselman asked a question at the beginning of the night that said, "Why can't we just figure this out?" And it's because the human condition is hard to measure, and it's hard to change, and we have to remember that. That trauma, and mental health, and substance abuse does not go away overnight. Most people who go on this journey, it is a years-long journey for them. It takes a long time, sometimes three, five, eight, 10 years, to be able to see any measurable change in the human condition, and the fact that free will exists. People have free will. And so all we can do as agencies that are providing services is we can be there when they're ready to meet us, but we can't force anybody to take advantage of our programming. That's all.
I'm sorry, I just want to, there is one data point that kind of struck me, and I don't know that you mentioned it tonight, but one of them, one of those was, you offer support for people who might be just about to experience homelessness, but one of the things you do is you ask them to come back for counseling. That's a data point that I think is kind of interesting, that maybe, I don't remember what exactly what it is, but it was something like 28% of, of one population versus like a 98%.
Oh, I have that data point.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, can you share that?
Yeah, this is actually Diane's data point, that I steal from her all the time.
I'm glad you understood what I was saying.
Yeah, no, so, if you see a move, people often ask, "How come we're putting more services behind families or prevention, instead of the chronically homeless individuals?" And this data point is probably a couple years outdated, and so if it is, Diane can correct me, but it was, at the time, 97% of individuals that received a hotel voucher to stay in a hotel overnight, did not show up for their required programming appointment the next morning with cap services. However, 94% of families that received a hotel voucher and stayed in a hotel showed up and enrolled in the required programming the next morning. And so when you see a shift to families and to prevention, that's because that's where we're seeing the biggest impact on dollars. And we have to be good stewards of donor dollars and state and federal dollars. And so, we respond to the environment.
And I do want to say that we do provide a lot of funding for the chronically homeless. There, we have 10 individuals in our permanent supportive housing program, and we spend about $237,000 a year on those 10 individuals with their housing, their food, all of their costs. So we do spend quite a bit on those folks. We don't say that they're not worth it or anything, it's just that's all I can write for the HUD grant, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you-
All I want to say is, "Thank you." That's all.
Okay, moving on. Number six is creating a new Department of Social Development and Action in Wausau City Government. We've been, I know that that has come up, we've talked about it. Does anybody want to speak to this? Aldra Killian.
Thank you. I think it was a great night, really informative, and I've got some comments, you know, that kind of tie in the city and the county into my comments, so I want to thank Administrator Leonard for coming. I know he thought there may be questions, it got a little long without them, so, but thank you for coming. And I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone, both on the city side, and the county side, and the private sector, for everything you've done. And I think when we bring up things like a department like this, first of all, it sounds really radical, but I can disabuse you of that. This comes up all the time over Wausau's history, so for decades, you know, the topic of health and human services, and the departmental structure and capacity of the city, this is a recurrent theme in Wausau's history, and really, about seven years ago in 2016, it was a, it was a topic that had a lot of interest. So, that being said, we heard a lot about tools tonight, and there are a lot of good tools out there, but I think that with tools, it becomes a matter of, where do they go? And I, I think it brings up, what is the toolbox? And rather than just kind of tossing a hammer there and leaving a wrench here or there, I think the, the concept was about, what is the toolbox? What is the relevant classification? Aldra Gisselman spoke to that a little bit earlier, and it's important. We, we talked at Human Resources about this, and the chief came to speak, and we talked about, you know, when you go into a grocery store, and you're looking for an apple, you don't go to the meat department, you go to the produce section, and the reason for that is that I think it's relevance, and the way we classify things makes a difference in terms of how we look at them. But I'll touch on one last thing, because it came up recurrently, and that was money. Everyone says, "Where does the money come for these things? We, we don't have the money." I think the past is a better indicator of these things, rather than future unknowns. So, looking at the county, and this isn't a criticism, it's just the facts, that we talked about the pilot program with McClellan Street. Now, that had apparently a fantastic outcome. The record said there was steady demand, but as, as we talked about with the fire chief, there was a reduction in hospitalization rates, and that's important for our citizens' health, but it also reduces costs. So, what happened? The program was, was cut, and in North Central Healthcare memo, they said it was forecasted to lose $35,000. So, you know, it was cut, but when we look at, where does the money come from? Just the prior year at North Central Healthcare, 2020, when you just look at C-level executive and officer payments and benefits, just the year before, in one loan by itself, $60,000 was paid out, which was, you know, almost twice the amount of the forecasted loss that apparently contributed to the cessation of this program. So, we do have the money, but apparently, you know, levels of government spend money based on priorities, and sometimes the priorities are different. And my colleague asked about the city, and where the money comes from, you know, we've had a lot of opportunities to have resources for different endeavors, and I'm just going to talk about the last three years, and the commitments this body made through votes toward putting public funds and tax dollars toward high-end and luxury development. So, $10.8 million T-WALL development, $6.7 million in taxpayer incentives, Swidersky Sterling development on the riverfront, $4.7 million for mall demolition and redevelopment. Just those alone, in the last three years, we've committed to $22 million in taxpayer funds for upscale or luxury development. So I think the question of, where does the money come from? I think we have capabilities, and we've also had capabilities that were unique during COVID. So, we had the Neighborhood Investment Fund program, that there was a $15 million ceiling on what we could apply for, and we applied $10.8 million for the Waus Bridge attached to a luxury development. Now that could have gone toward housing or childcare, so that is a tremendous opportunity cost. And when you look at the money we've either committed to or potentially lost in the last three years, we're between $30 and $40 million, just right there. So if it takes a couple hundred thousand dollars for a few more Tracy's, or to start a department, so we don't have to forcibly take our citizens out of parks, hey, I think we've got the options to do that. So, you know, thank you for holding this meeting tonight. I, I think it was very productive and informative, and hopefully, as we move ahead, there can be positive, just outcomes. Thank you.
Aldra Rasmussen.
Thank you. And I think it's important to recognize, though, when we talk about development and things that this community has decided to invest in, with the exception of mall demolition, the development projects that were discussed, all of those are reverse-tit arrangements, where the developer invests their own money, takes their own risk, puts up a building, and then recovers a percentage of their investment through the new tax dollars that they have created in this community. We did not take tax dollars or debt borrowing and put it to any of those projects, and 10 years ago, that absolutely may have happened. So, we've changed that structure. So to say that those dollars could have been shifted, reallocated, and diverted to another purpose, that isn't the case, because those dollars are coming into this community because the private sector is taking a risk and building with their own money. But that said, you know, I think that, first, it's, it's too heavy of a lift for the taxpayer to support yet another silo of local government through creating a department in this building, which really amounts to be another expensive supervisor for Tracy, or any of her cohorts that may come in the future. Tracy is effective, working right where she works today. She works hand-in-hand with the original outreach coordinator, Eric Lemerand, who had tremendous success in this. The two of them are in the same environment and can bounce ideas off of each other every day. The fact that she works at the police department as a civilian is irrelevant. And so, the idea that we would create another department, first, the county has the framework to manage social services, and they've got the professional staff, they've got the training, the licensing, they've got all the requirements met, they have the framework. The last thing we want to do is dive into that realm and create something that's duplicative, when we can partner with the people who do it. Now McClellan House is a great example. McClellan House lost its funding, and it was successful. If someone had come knocking on the door before McClellan House got defunded and said, "Hey, Wausau, we would like $35,000 from you to keep this program," I'd be willing to wager that the Finance Committee and this council would have found $35,000 to partner with them. We wouldn't have expected 100% of the freight to be paid, but no one asked. And so those are the collaborative conversations that we absolutely could have as two units of government, but it didn't get, it didn't get done. And so those are the kind of discussions we need to have. Would somebody come to our, come to our door and say, "Hey, Wausau, you want case management from NCHC? Maybe you should pony up some cash to pay for half of a position to devote to this purpose." Maybe we would go back and take a look at the coffers, and see if we could afford to do that. We partner with our school district to pay for school resource officers. In that case, we're getting money from them. Well, maybe if we want this work done bad enough, we can pony up some money and have, help them help us. But those discussions need to happen in earnest. And, you know, I think it maybe starts with a discussion, perhaps between the mayor and Administrator Leonard, about, you know, what does this partnership look like? What could this cost? You know, and put real dollars to it, and come back to us and ask. The worst we can say is, "No." We've not said no yet. And I would invite that ask in the Finance Committee, because look at the things we've paid for. Now granted, ARPA funding was an unprecedented, probably once-in-a-lifetime revenue source, but we've made tremendous impacts with that money that was given to us. And, you know, that said, we look for funding sources, we probably could do some shifting around and figure some of this stuff out. And, you know, before, it's on fire. With McClellan House gone, it's on fire. So, you know, and we need to find a way to rekindle that partnership, and whether it's through personnel and money, or both, or whatever, we certainly can have those discussions, and, you know, get a successful program back, back up and running, and get some legs under it again. But I don't think the answer is to create an internal department here where we start from scratch, and then we perhaps duplicate, we, first, we increase our overhead, and then, a lot of the work that's getting done in the community is done by agencies that we have no control over. They're either other people's agencies, or they're nonprofits. So, we hire, what, a department full of people to pontificate about the solution, but yet the solution is at least half carried out or created by others in the community that are not within our purview. So I think that money that we would spend on the overhead piece of that is spent better somewhere else. So I will just not support the creation of a department to solve social issues. I just think that we need to partner with the people that we know can help us, and not create another layer of management in this building, because I think that represents an ongoing cost to the taxpayer that we can achieve the same results without that. So, thank you.
Aldra Larson.
Usually, I don't agree with Aldra Rasmussen, but in this case, I would have to say, you know, being on the Public Health and Safety Committee, you know, we've, we've done leaps and bounds, you know, and, and we've got our foot on the ground here, and, and we've done a lot of work, and there's a lot of work to be done. You know, I would, I would love to see the mayor and possibly Commissioner Leonard, you know, get together and maybe put this, this former dorm building as a transitional center, so we can get people out of our parks. And so, we can get them housed while we figure this thing out, you know, while we figure it out, maybe do a tiny home village, as was suggested and stuff, but, but, you know, we need to do something now, and, and I just don't think that creating a new department would just damper what, what we've already, what we've already started, you know, and if it, if it needs more Tracy's on the ground, you know, let's put more Tracy's on the ground. on the ground and people in an office, on a, you know, collecting a salary, you know? And, and therefore, I, for those reasons alone, I'm just not gonna accept a, I'm not gonna, um, go along with a, a new, a new department. Thank you.
I'll call in just a second, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate what I said earlier, that I don't, um, support a new department. And for many of the reasons of Alder Rasmussen, um, it is, it is, I, it is not easy to start a human services department. It isn't just putting a hundred thousand dollars and, you know, starting a new department. You will have to start all, uh, SOPs, you know, um, all new procedures. You're going to have to, you heard Ben Lee speak earlier about, uh, release of information. You are under HIPAA laws. All case management is under all that. That is, uh, a major lift. When we already have either case management through the, uh, nonprofits, or we have it through the county NCHC, um, we need to find ways to collaborate and use their, um, framework, their framework into doing that. I, I, I totally agree. I think that, um, it is a waste of our, of our time. Time is of the essence, then we use the people that have the knowledge. Thank you. Mayor, you can...
Yeah, thank you. I see that Administrator Leonard is probably setting up time with, uh, Deputy Chief Barnes and I for, who knows, maybe this week even. So I take that challenge, uh, happily, um, and I do think we have a lot of places where we agree and we can talk. I actually, one of the folks that, uh, joined us today earlier was, um, the Chair of the County Finance Director, and I said, "Hey, what are the chances you would put some ARPA funding towards, you know, some effort that was collaborative?" And he said, "Hey, why don't you submit some requests?" So, I, you know, I take that challenge, too. So I think we have some opportunities. Um, I'm not, I don't, I don't know how to weigh in on a new department, just, um, I, I don't, I don't have anything to say about it. I think that, um, you know, I, I learned a lot about, you know, the whatever spadat stuff that you're all talking about over there, um, and all of the ways that we collaborate. I think we can foster that relationship, and maybe it's a matter of, I mean, I, I saw a lot of light bulbs going off tonight, um, when people were talking, so maybe there's more of this kind of conversation that needs to be regularly updated, um, and maybe that can take place at Public Health and Safety, maybe that takes place, I don't know where. But anyway, um, the other part, I just wanted to get back to what the, the things that I wrote down for our goal-setting right before we started, was we wanted to understand, you know, this, this, this kind of capture, um, where we're at right now and where we've been. We really wanted public input, so thank you, public, for sticking around, and I know we're gonna hear from you shortly, and I also wrote down an open mind, somebody mentioned that, so, um, I think, I just wanna thank you all for participating in this. I know it's a long night, I think it's almost eleven, uh, so, thanks.
Okay, Alder Martin, did you?
Uh, thank you. And I know, like many of us here, we've been at this since, I think, four o'clock this afternoon, since we took the tour, uh, down by the, uh, the river and the bridge area. But, um, I heard a lot of things today, this evening. I heard a lot, that, I heard a lot of the, of great stuff that our community partners are doing, namely, the Marathon County Outreach Task Force, United Way Housing Task Force, and all of those other volunteer organizations that are part of those umbrellas, the neighbor, um, you know, just Community Partners Campus, the, um, Catholic Charities, uh, Open Door, just, uh, just to name the ones, um, just off the top of my head. I learned, you know, all of the things that our, our city departments are doing in order to, um, manage, uh, the, the homeless, the unhoused crisis that we're experiencing, Wausa Police, Fire, the Community Development, of course, and of course, the City and County Parks Department. The one thing I did not hear this evening is a compelling reason why we need a, um, to create an, a new department, a new level of bureaucracy within the city. I think we are managing things, I think we can manage things with the, um, the, the structure we have now, the organizational structures we have now. I think if we can, if we can strengthen our collaboration between the, the city and the county and all of our, and all of our community organizations, I, we, we would be stronger than, than trying to reinvent the wheel here within the, within this municipality. So, um, on its face, right now, I, I don't think I would be supporting, uh, a creation of a new department on social development in action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comment, we'll see who stayed around. Ron Alexander?
Wow, you guys worked late. Thank you very much, uh, for this opportunity. Uh, I live at, uh, one five four two oh Brandenburg Avenue in Merrill, in, in, in the Village of Maine, and, uh, I'm gonna take you back about twenty-five years, uh, from my experience. What I wanted to share with you is some of my experience, uh, with the homeless unhoused population, and, uh, makes, maybe make some recommendations about, uh, about the, uh, about the future. I start out in the, in the nineties, I was the, the Director of the Wausa Salvation Army in the, in the late nineties. It was a great experience, and that's where I learned the variety of reasons why, why individuals and families become homeless, and especially how to relate to those facing these challenges. Then, as an Addictions Counselor at North Central Healthcare in the early two thousands, I managed a scattered-site apartment program for homeless individuals with addiction issues, funded through a federal HUD grant. We had three apartments. Over a five-year period, had over forty clients, and the majority of them were able to make, uh, great progress to achieve stability and great strides towards self-sufficiency. My approach was close support, case management, frequent contact, building a relationship around trust, offering hope and possibilities to individuals who had lost much. Not unlike the approach used by your outreach specialists and staff from the Community Outreach Task Force and other volunteers. There seems to be an, an agreement that case management works. But what is needed is the housing component. Expanding shelter hours, adding a day shelter component are nice, but really are stopgap measures and do not replace the need for appropriate housing. A personal space. I also believe that the best alternative is a tiny home village with a community support There is much research and data available for various approaches, uh, to develop this project. But the warning is, it has to be done right. So you have to be careful and, and make sure that all the, uh, components are there that lead to success. Uh, so you can't, you can't rush to it. A prominent underlying issue with many of those unhoused, and has been mentioned many times tonight, is trauma, resulting in the need for personal space and autonomy. The tiny house model sure, uh, is, you know, provides that choice. I think one of the things that I, I've, I've heard tonight about the McClellan House, about shelter care, about dormitories, about group living, uh, I think one of the things that I've found in my experience, working with individuals with difficult addiction and mental health problems, they don't necessarily do well together. Other words, if one person, uh, has an issue or starts to deteriorate, it kind of permeates to the other people in, in the vicinity, uh, that, that they're, that they're living with. And so, even though there's a friendship and a bond be, between these people, personal space, a, a place to lock up their belongings is essential. In the formulation of a comprehensive plan, I think the approach used for the very successful Community Partners Campus is a, is, is a great model, involving stakeholders, strong leadership with public and private resources. That's the one thing I didn't hear tonight, was this idea of having a comprehensive plan, lots of different ideas. But I think, you know, if you're really gonna make, make progress, you need to sit down and really hammer out a document that takes in all the variables, has a, uh, a plan of action, a timetable, uh, and, and to phase in, uh, certain things. And I think not to have that document would, uh, would be a mistake. So I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If I stay any later, I'll become a dedicated customer myself. Yeah, lots been said tonight, and I've been kind of in this journey, uh, too, over the last couple of years, discussing homelessness in Wausa. And I guess of all the things I've learned, homelessness is a much more extensive and complex problem than, than most people commonly believe it to be. And it's growing. It's growing with poverty as our economy contracts. I think our response needs to be quick and bold. Uh, there are successful models in cold climates that have accomplished miracles in terms of housing the unhoused in a very housing-first, uh, direction, very housing-first model. I think whatever direction you need to go, you need to decide what success looks like. Uh, does success look like ninety-seven percent of your four, of, of ninety percent of your clientele are housed after two years? How will you determine that your partnering model is successful? And you may reevaluate in six months from now and decide, "Hey, maybe we should consider the coordinating effect of a department." I think also in this process, in addition to looking at remedying homelessness, the prevention of homelessness is critical. The more it can be, be prevented, the less of an issue that homelessness becomes. Implementing things like the Guarantee Basic Income Pilot, aggressively seeking government funding to develop multi-layered affordable housing, expanding food distribution, and improving transportation, eliminating environmental toxins, the more this is done, the less of an issue homelessness becomes. Advocating at the level of the state government for greater access to medical and mental healthcare through expansion of Medicaid, raising of the minimum wage, and expansion of the child tax credit, the less of an issue homelessness then becomes. There is a study done in 2020 at Columbia University Center on Poverty. They found that income guarantees of as little as two hundred fifty dollars a month alone, alone, can reduce poverty by forty percent. This is far superior to any multimillion-dollar tax-funded, tax-abated project for high-end living and retail space. Seize this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Establish what you will define as success and reevaluate that, and be having, and reevaluate it with an open mind. Seize this opportunity. You have the community support, you have funding, and together, we can give poverty and homelessness a hand up. Thank you.
So, I was encouraged to speak today, because you guys have heard from lots of organizations. However, I'm with Schultz Property Management, so we're often villainized, I believe, in a lot of ways, that we aren't part of the solution, we're part of the problem, um, without actually hearing or seeing what we go through. I spend a lot of my time finding people, not in the places that you guys are talking about, of bridges and gazebo's, but in our properties, um, whether they're occupied, and it's the basements where somebody's living, or some of our vacant places that they've broken to, that we've boarded up so many times, and we can't get help. Wausa PD has been brought out, and they just kind of shoo them away, and they're back that same night. That takes up a lot of our time in trying to clean up our properties, keep them out of there, checking up on them, um, which is a pretty big burden to us. And as a company, we believe people deserve a chance to build a life for themselves, which is why we work with every organization you've heard from, all the partners that were on the United Way, um, I've built relationships with all of them. And most of the people are very appreciative of the chance that they're given. However, um, we've put in tens of thousands of dollars just this past year in cleaning up our properties, um, because of housing some of the homeless. We've had instances where they've scrapped out water heaters of ours, they've tried ripping out wiring. I mean, we're left with a lot. And that number actually doesn't even include the rent lost by us while we're going through eviction processes or mediation. We have to go into quite hazardous situations, um, with drugs and needles, and a lot of times, we band together as a company, throw on some gloves, and take care of it ourselves because of how costly it is to have a hazardous cleanup crew come in and do that for us. I'm grateful to say that I have some awesome people. My fiance has a construction business, he helps us tremendously, and if it wasn't for him, um, our bills would be a lot more. He also helps out Tracy and other organizations of, uh, moving them into places, our trucks, our people, we help get it all done. I have currently housed nine families with the women's community, five of which are still my current tenants. We have six currently housed with NCAP, however, the number is a lot larger, that's just the current ones that we still have. And on a daily basis, I work with the hero Tracy, um, and we have currently housed fifteen people together. She's along every step of the way with me, which is absolutely wonderful, because I can tell you, if it wasn't for that, these people still would not be housed. The follow-up and the assistance that's provided by most of these organizations is above and beyond their job, and they put in that time, um, due to caring about their people that lack these life skills and support and recovering. There's a huge need, like it's been said tonight, for more social work, and these organizations to really come together to get it taken care of, because we can house the people, but I don't have the time in my day either to do social work for these people. And that's what a lot of my day actually has become, and this is why a lot of these management companies graduate from helping and having these low-budgeted places to new construction. I just wanna conclude with saying that Schultz is fully on board for helping with homelessness and giving back to our community. We have a lot of options that could help with this, um, and we're definitely willing to talk about it with people. And in talking with some of these organizations, it seems like Schultz is one of the last companies that's even willing to take a look into this and to help house these people. And we also wish that there would be more financial help on our side of things to enable us to continue to help these people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think I'd make it. Good evening. My husband and I owned property within the River District of downtown Wausa. We're on the near west side. Recently, I had the opportunity to, um, attend a River District meeting with other property owners and business owners. During that meeting of a couple weeks ago, your property owners, taxpayers of the downtown area, and business owners discuss homeless-related issues, encampments, drug addictions, needles in public areas, garbage, theft, and property damage issues, and ongoing safety concerns with homeless sleeping in ramp stairways, bathrooms, doorways, and interacting with employees coming and going in... and interacting with employees coming and going in evening hours. I'm sorry that not any of the representatives of the council was either invited or attended our meeting. I'm able to speak to this issue with confidence. My dad was a social worker who during his career worked with juveniles, the elderly, those with mental illness, and yes, the homeless. At the time of my dad's retirement, he was the director of Brown County Social Services and led a team of over 400 employees. I often spoke with him about the same issues we're discussing tonight during my four terms on this council because at times, people would ask us to make the same considerations you've been asked to that have brought us here tonight. My dad's counsel was always the same. These types of services are not the responsibility of city government. It was not appropriate then, it is not appropriate now. Instead, I urge you to build and strengthen the partnerships of the organizations that have been here tonight, specifically with the county, the state, and the nonprofits who want to solve this problem. Instead of creating a new city department and trying to rebuild with staff who this is way out of their wheelhouse, you are aware that property owners like me and residents of the city are concerned. The city's role really is to provide clear direction to your city departments, uphold ordinances for residents who are not the homeless, who are affected, and to review city codes that, if relaxed, may offer zoning alterations to allow for solutions like the tiny house village in an appropriate placement. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I have Amanda Ledecky, but I don't see her here. I think she went home. So we're done with public comment. We are now with policy discussion. Do we have policy recommendations to refer to committees? I know Lisa's been writing a list, a lot go through public health and safety. Anybody have any? Yeah, we'll start with Lisa.
Thank you. So I made a few notes of some things we want to look at. I think in public health and safety, and I think the fire chief already knows, we would like to hear more about community care paramedic and what that can do for us. We'll certainly do that in public health and safety. We heard from the police department about the consideration, or at least the evaluation of a new policy that would prohibit alcohol in city parks with the exception of organized events. That ask has come to us before. We'd not implemented it, but Nina did something similar, and they've had some success with it in the past. We can certainly talk about that in public health and safety and talk about the pros and cons, revive that discussion. We've talked about reviving the McClellan House or something similar. I think that if we can talk about a partnership with some case management and maybe have some discussions with Marathon County about staffing and costs, I would like to have those discussions, both in public health and safety and finance, once we can put some timeline and some numbers to something like that. I also think that if we are to give the police and the Parks Department as a council in the future some type of direction as far as what to do with our ordinances, I think that it runs counter to the policy we make to tell those folks to ignore it. So I don't know that we're equipped to make a directive to them tonight, but I would certainly think that we should have a meaningful discussion about what it means to make policy and then expect people to carry it out. So that's where I left off. I think that we need to know a little bit more about some workforce housing models. I think that happens in economic development. And if we want to look at some partnerships for a consortium for block grant, that also happens with citizen-driven panels. So for the three committees that I'm involved with, I'm happy to put those things on the agenda and get those discussions rolling. So I don't know if anyone else has anything that they took from this. I think we do want to talk about a tiny home village, but we need a bunch more information on that as well.
Kimir.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the tiny home concept because we heard it from a couple of people here. We had two folks in the audience who actually have kind of prototype that they showed me. It's really cool. It got a little late, I think. So maybe there's some folks internally I can key them into. But I think what we discovered, I don't know if it was last year with the initial discussion, that the Outreach Task Force kind of spearheaded was that there was a lot of concern in the neighborhood. So I think the concept is worth exploring somewhere, and I think we should talk about the concept and educate and talk about what this would cost and all that and what we would need to be successful, and then work on identifying places where maybe this could work, or do we put out an RFP? So I think that's maybe a mix of committees. But I also, one of the things that folks were talking about was transit a little bit, things being on the bus line, being off the bus line. We do have a new transit director. Again, we're getting late here, so I think he's maybe hopefully resting. But I think that's not off the table either, is discussions about what our transit looks like with the future of Wausau Transit, where we go, what we need, how do we accomplish that? So I would just put that to maybe on transit, maybe in a few months when he has his feet a little bit wetter. But I think that's worth exploring.
Aldra Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, just a couple thoughts. And I believe the first one, Public Health and Safety, would likely be a relevant committee. I think tonight was an opportunity to learn a lot and to see, or at least see once again that there are tools out there on both the city and the county level. And I learned kind of something in Liberation and Freedom Committee from Deputy Chief back there about some things are low-hanging fruit and easy to do, and one should go after them when they can, if it can move the needle. So what I'd like to do is consider taking the offerings that we heard about tonight, city, county, private sector, and nonprofit sector, and consolidate that information into a one-pager along with, although we didn't get to talk about them, the county's offerings related to DHS and social services. So take this information, including information on the DHS Housing Support Services associated with the county. Social Services has a homeless mail pickup site offering. And also, when I talked to Social Services, they told me that those who are unhoused are fully eligible for badger care as well. Like to take these, the city offerings, the nonprofit and private sector offerings, compile them into a one-pager, and then put it into a weatherproof format so that we can distribute all this information to individuals who need it. I think having the offerings is great, and sometimes there's a case manager involved. But I think we could also move the needle by getting this to relevant unhoused individuals, so it's all at their fingertips. And then secondly, and I don't know if this would go to Public Health and Safety as well, but I'd like to talk about a policy, codifying a policy on addressing the impacts of displacement through government action when that displacement was an anticipated outcome. So in this case, we're talking about the bridge. And certainly, if the government here is going to take action, we're well aware in advance that's going to lead to displacement. And I think, given all the concerns that apparently seem to be shared, and I'm hearing, then where do people go? I mean, if they're not going to camp in the park, where do they go? If they're going to be moved out from under the bridge, then where do they go? I think we should codify a policy on how we address that. You know, displacements occurred before with city action along Thomas Street. We knew before that that the city's actions were going to displace people, and we dealt with it. I think certainly it's different, but we should be aware that our actions have consequences and outcomes in making sure the people they impact are taken care of. So I think it would be a complex but rather interesting discussion. And I think the goal would be to make sure that the actions we're taking as a body don't have severe adverse impacts that we can't mitigate a bit. Thank you.
Aldra Denny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the public commenters waiting till the end because we had some good comment at the end. And we talked about costs and who's paying for this, the property owners. We had some property owners, property management people, some landowners discuss the hit they're taking when they have these issues. So we don't see that. And maybe our community development department has resources to reach out to them because I do know people in the business, and it's easier to try to get away from renting to that segment if they're continuously or they have frequent issues with this costly cleanup, potentially dangerous cleanup. There's drugs and alcohol involved. I don't know. I guess the main thing I was looking at there is can we help them with any sort of grant or compensation that they can continue fixing up these properties and moving on? Because I know that, so not necessarily eating it. They're making a decision to pass on the rent to other future renters, or they're getting out of that business entirely. So I don't know the answer if we have ability to reach out to them and offer some assistance. I think we should look at that. And then talking about displacement, you know, I think we, there may be programs already available that I haven't seen yet, but Section 42 has time limits. And there's one in particular, Wausau, the old Wausau East. By the end of next year, there's 42 residents that will be asked to move on. And talking to a lot of them, they don't have a place to go yet. So I'd like to see more proactive outreach to them for counseling before they find themselves in a spot where they really don't have a place to live. So we've got time with them yet, but some of their rents, they're currently, I know people paying $500, $600 a month. They're going to be paying market rate. And I've just been, my rent's just gone up myself. They're going to be paying $1,300 to $1,400 a month on an apartment that they had previously been paying $500 a month. So that's a crisis about ready to, that's a ticking time bomb, if you will. Lastly, I will, I guess second, the tiny house model that Ron mentioned. The onsite case management is important. The personal space is important. Because as we've heard testimony already with the encampments, when something goes wrong or when, it's a contagion. If people are allowed to herd up like that, we're asking for more problems than we're solving. So if we're going to allow something like that, let's make it deliberate to offer the services or the casework. Supervision maybe is a better word for it rather than a out-of-the-way, out-of-sight, out-of-mind encampment. So where does that go? Maybe public health and safety, or where we're going to look at tiny house. Thank you.
Aldra Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that initiative surrounding housing and the lack thereof, whether it be a development of new low-income housing or development of some kind of a contingency plan, that effort has always resided in economic development from the housing side in terms of developing. So whether you're developing market-rate housing, a contingency plan for the loss of housing, or some type of low-income affordable housing, whatever it is, it usually comes through that conduit because that's where the funding comes from, and community development generally staffs that. I will say that with regard to a landlord program to fix up their units, to make it affordable for them to do so, and then perhaps not also elevate the rent, Tammy Strotts did put through at the beginning of the ARPA cycle an ARPA project for that type of effort. However, it was so early in the grant cycles, we put a pin in that project in finance. And so that is one item that we have on a waitlist. It was almost a million dollars, though, of that ARPA funding to make that happen. So that project is still there. I mean, the proposal is still among us, but we have not yet sent that forward for funding. Now, we're just in the neighborhood of $2 million of ARPA left of our total allocation. We just sent forward to council for two weeks from now, two projects from tonight, and we still have not yet fully funded the water solution for PFAS. So we are about out of ARPA money to do these things with, but that plan is there if there's interest in it. I do wonder a little bit about the contemplating of displacement when it results from enforcement of the law. I mean, the policy we have on urban camping right now is, it's a law enforcement action. We've made an ordinance, the enforcement thereof. We don't form contingency plans for the outcomes when other laws get enforced. And so I think the idea of having some available options, I also don't know that it's necessarily the city staff's responsibility to go and round up the folks whose rent may be going up and then find options for them. I do think that there's room for information and resources to be given out. So if people contact them in community development and say, hey, my rent is going up 50% in a few months, what can I do? There's some answers for them, and there's information to be given out. But I also think that there's a limitation to what we can achieve. So I think we have to walk a fine line and, I guess, walk before we can run with some of this stuff. But I think if we, as a body, direct the staff to enforce the law, then they need to go out and enforce the law. So, thank you.
Okay. We're on no more comments, so we are on adjournment. Who would love to make the motion to adjourn?
The mayor.
We already got you.
Okay.
All in favor.
We are, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.